Good morning, everyone. We're on County Sheriff Tom Verne. I'm Mr. David J. Allen. You can use the county's deck for this on Monday and this will be later. The county's act will be today at 1:00. So we're pleased with that. I heard all the officials were telling me that our county's got over 100 jobs. Apparently, people's agenda has... Somebody watching. A lot of somebody. So we're pleased to hear about that. So looking at today's agenda, this is incredibly important information. Throughout the day, one of the things that I look forward to every year with this team, you might have an agenda, but you better have priorities for spending money to accomplish your agenda. So this is critical information. So with that, we return to Mr. Early. He introduces his team. But this will be given to the second team. So we do have Connie, it's Mr. Steve Givens and Lou Allen. You guys go first, you go second?
Okay, of course.
Good morning. I'm looking forward to this. We'll be...
We had to pull that mic in and share it. We had some complaints yesterday about we were talking here. Not here, so we'll listen in.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see. Good morning. I think first, I wanted to do quick introductions and then do introductory remarks. And five of us will be talking about different aspects of the presentation. First of all, I'm standing early and you can hear your accent.
Good morning, Amber Inchik, Deputy Director of Office of Division of Justice.
Good morning, David J. Allen.
All right, good morning. Good morning, I'm Steve Givens for Good Finance.
Good morning, Lisa Allen, Deputy Director of Finance.
Okay. Okay. First of all, what we're going to do, we have several parts to this. We'll try to move through them in some laggity. We had the economic outlook, fiscal outlook, tax credit, actually debt outlook. I do want to... I do want to say there are a couple, there are a few sort of overriding things that I want to make sure we point out. One is we're in a period of very high uncertainty, both because of the economic environment and pandemic impacts, and because of changes, the effects of changes in state policy. So let's, we're going to talk... The combination of three is going to mean that things are likely to be both uncertain and a little tighter than we would anticipate. That I want. David, this is the first slide. So I do want to... I mean, David sounds like there's some of the economic islands, but I first want to talk a little bit about what's happening with workforce. Because this is, this is, sorry, this is a particularly unusual and difficult item. If you look at this chart, and what's happening in British Bridges County is not separate from what's happening in Maryland. Basically, whole state of Maryland is almost identical phenomenon. So if you look at this chart, go back to the point where you see April 2020, and you see that big drop in the work, in the size of the workforce, and the rest is related to COVID. Then we had a recovery. And then we start to see that dropping off again. And that's one of the things that's happened, and we have not, we are way below the number of total people either employed or looking for employment, that is, in the workforce, the situation before COVID. So we've had pretty significant change. And that change in the size of the workforce is affecting many things. It affects, it's one of the reasons why almost every institution is looking for employees in many different categories. There are different than that. There are a number of arguments to why this is true. And my personal view is when you take the number of people who left the workforce because, aside the tiger, the number of people who are on the workforce because they, because of illness, long-term COVID, deaths, remain deaths in the country. And then you take the number of people who didn't come in because of tightly immigration laws. The numbers, I assume, look at maybe a net drop in the remaining who were required to enter the workforce. I'm sure everybody's estimating, I assume there's as low as two, as high as three. The net effect is workforce is hard, there is a smaller workforce. So that's one of the things that impacts all of our projections, revenues, et cetera, and just... So with that, David, if you can take over and talk about the rest of the economic component, and we'll...
Thank you. Slide five. Thank you, David. Slide five shows you the unemployment rate for the county compared to the state. Prior to the pandemic, the unemployment rates between county and state had tracked very closely on the pandemic, that disparity that broke, that we see that in the beginning of this chart, we turned outside. When the county unemployment rate was two percentage points higher than the state rate. And that had to do with the mix of industries where there were more unemployment in the county. And part of that is in the major hospitality field, which is represented at a higher level in county and in the overall state. You can see over time that the unemployment rate has decreased. In the most recent data, the state rate is down 4%, the county rate is down 4.6%. So that disparity has also narrowed, less than one percentage point. So definitely positive news, but not all the industries have recovered fully from the pandemic, and so it continues to be an issue. But unemployment is, or close to unemployment is a good indicator for the economy, but it's also a lot of weather reasons by the federal reserve forces to raise interest rates because we continue to have unemployment numbers and consumer demand. Patients is not, it came here. Concept slide and a couple of slides. On this next slide, this shows you the unemployed by sector. There is a lag in the data, so the most recently available data from the Department of Labor is December 21st. So there's almost a hundred back. But you can see here that compared to prior to the pandemic, that the county is still down about 20,000 jobs at this point in time. And most of the job losses are still concentrated in kind of two areas. This area of state unemployment and the leisure hospitality area, which is taking about 50% of that decrease in jobs. The hospitality as a sector hasn't recovered naturally, so that's still continuing to recover from the pandemic. And then the state has been having issues with low compensation levels and having very high baby surrogates. So the state is experiencing 10%, 20% baby surrogates in all the savings. So that's, that area is not recovered yet. This next slide compares the job growth in the past 12 months, that is, December 2022, December 21st, fourth quarter, with the eight large jurisdictions in the state. That shows that the counties in the middle of the pack, 3.3% job growth, and the state might have just under 6%. Definitely positive development for all of the counties to continue to have a good job growth. But, I'm sorry, this is the first slide. So this is, this is, everyone's mind is the trends in inflation. A top chart shows you overall consumer price index, including wealth factors. And then the bottom of the chart is core inflation, which excludes fuel, food and energy costs. So that's what the government is usually looking more at, at core energy, I'm sorry, the core CPI numbers. But you can see that inflation has really spiked in the last, say, 18 months. There's a variety of factors for that coming in. And then in the calendar year, there was strong consumer demand, but there were supply chain problems, there were shortages of inventory, fuel costs that got up. The more you're paying, it's also an issue with food inflation. So a whole variety of factors that have been towards inflation. The Federal Reserve has raised rates several times in this calendar year. They're expecting to raise rates again today, about 50 basis points, that's 5%. And additional rates increases are likely in the spring, as inflation is done at the levels that the Federal Reserve would like to see, more than 2%, 3% range. But you see at the top chart, CPIs come down to about 7.1% as of November. And that drop is largely due to drops in fuel prices, actually caused the slowdown to come down. As there are increases that may turn around, the rates we see. Core inflation is about 6% level through November, still higher than the Federal Reserve would like to see. You know, the concern now is whether or not higher inflationary costs start to show up in service industries, where it's going to be a little bit more interesting, harder to resolve. But at this point, the Federal Reserve is committed to raising interest rates over inflation, and that will continue to play out, at least for the next year. More concerning is the construction cost index. This is the cost of inflation for construction materials. In the past two years, it's risen at double-digit rates. And through fiscal 22, this is as of June 30th, the rate prior fiscal 2018%. The issue with construction cost inflation is that it's going to reduce the purchasing power from county's capital program. So as the county issues funds for debt, it's going to be able to achieve projects because of the cost of returns. This chart shows you the trends in the county real estate activity. The dotted line is the median price and the bars are average sales, or the sales volume average per month. And the, since the pandemic, the median price had increased significantly and reached about $400,000 as a median price. The housing inventory has been very low in the U.S. as a whole. It's under invested in the housing industry the last 10 years since the Great Recession. So the available housing is very low. And coupled with very low winter space up until 2022 have caused prices to rise and availability of housing to further decrease, as well as the days of the market have decreased significantly. To as low as 12, 15 days on average. The Federal Reserve began raising interest rates in the spring. As a result, mortgage rates have gone up, they're now close to 7%. And there's going to drop again. Sales, about a 20% drop, so once about 1,000 units a month, now it's down to about 800. But the median price continues to remain about $300,000, which is a kind of a positive sign because, on one hand, with the higher construction costs, you expect the median price to remain high. That's also a reflection, I think, of low availability of the amount of housing available for sale. So moving forward, there's some expectation that prices may begin to temper, but with low availability of inventory, I don't think that housing prices are going to drop very much. So housing affordability could be an issue going forward in the county. This last chart shows you the increase in the assessable base of real property base from the state term of assessments and taxation, which assesses one-third of every county's properties each year. So all properties are reassessed over a period. So that's why you see the 2003 designations. The county's assessable base has grown at double digits for the last eight to nine years. But that doesn't necessarily translate into additional real property revenue because the county has a property tax limitation. So that is limited to inflation or higher 5% of core inflation. So fiscal 23, the cap, the number of tax credits increased by 5% as of fiscal 24. It's also decreasing by 5% because inflation is so much higher for the county's charter tax of 5%. So county does have a lot, let me use assessable tax capacity, it's about $84 million. And so even though prices have dropped, it's not going to affect the availability of additional real property revenue in the county as it continues to work through that assessable base. I'm going to stay.
Thank you, David. I do want to clarify the homestead cap. That, what that means, what David was pointing out is that because there is a significant amount of value that protects valuation, that hasn't been, that people haven't seen, because the right houses appreciated, but the, but the homestead cap, remember that how much their tax rate could go, their tax, tax, tax that paid would not go up. There is still a significant amount of increase that will occur. So even if we had zero increase in valuation next year, the homeowners will still have their homes, will still see an increase in the amount that they have to pay. And that amount will be, will grow at up to 5% with inflation. So this growth, we're pretty much going to be stable in our tax revenue. And we've got stable growth in our tax revenue for housing. Commercials are indifferent, but that gives us a better stability. So we do a six-year forecast. And I think many of you have seen our forecast before. And this one is, and we're always looking to make it as accurate as we can. But of course, as you move out, that's, that six-year is always a little iffy. Basically, what we do is we say, okay, let's assume we do everything the same way. We have same number of people, we, tax rates stay the same, everything stays the same. And, you know, there are things that we know. We know we're going to buy this, or not, or just stop paying for that, put that in. But basically saying, we just keep doing what we're doing, what would happen. And this is actually more positive than we would say in the wild. In the current, currently, there is, we're about $16 million in the current forecast down. We have about $16 million gap for '24. I think you might have seen where we're reaching, being always up on the scale with this. $16 million is basically flat. That is to say that while we are constantly adjusting, in the short run, if we get, we're looking at numbers that are slightly, we have to make slight adjustments to, but are not too dead. In the long run, our trends look basically similar. We're in a fairly decent long-run situation. But there are a couple items that I will talk about later. Basically, this is saying, our projection is we're just about a doubt, if we're careful. This slide, please. So let's talk about the things, there are some things that may give us a structural gap. And I do want to talk about a couple of those, a few of those things. So as I mentioned, we've had, we're looking at revenue rate, growth rates just in the years going forward, from 3.5% to 5.8%. We're, I think, right now with about 5%, a little 5% for '24, it'll change, but right now. And that seems to be similar for a number of other counties. Our expenditure growth is looking at about 3.4% to 6.2% based on what I, you know, those kinds of assumptions that I'm talking about. Now, here's the, here's one of the wild comments. This is, this is going to really affect us and we're coming here. The blueprint for Maryland's future, K-1 contributions are going to be really large. They're going to be, they're going to do a significant increase for education to match the legal requirements. And that, and it's going, and that's going to be, it's also going to be, it's also going to be hard to be 100% certain of that. With the law, as the law was created, we all, I know we all read this, many of us read discussions about, okay, this will have a bigger impact on Baltimore City, Port George County, and a couple other counties in the first year, so we would be hit harder. But there've been some, but it's also much more uncertain than we really, than we really realized because not only do you have the situation with all of the different levels that you have to support, unlike the old maintenance of F.C., you also have the tax implications, where we fall in terms of taxes across the state. And so the combination means, one, we will be looking at a much larger percentage increase this coming year. And two, there is a degree of uncertainty. And I would say it's true for a number of other counties. So that's, that's, that's a major item. The next thing, next thing I want to talk a little bit that's significant is our French benefit cost. We're trying, we continue to be working on improving our pension. We've gotten down to a fairly infallible level maybe a decade ago, and we are contracting better, and that continues. Workers' compensation costs are a significant issue, which we're a little more, but we are finally beginning to handle a portion of that. Opened, which is to say, to retire, the health benefits for retirees, there are other things, but that's 95% of it. That piece, we continue to fund on a cash basis. We're not, we're not funding on an actuarial basis because, you know, this is what I'm reporting. We have, one good thing in terms of certainty is that we have mayors and pollists that have been negotiating with all of the bargaining units. There are still a couple bargaining units that are to the government for counsel, but we have agreements with everyone, and the best joint agreements have been approved. So we're actually in a very predictable situation. Now, I will say, these are probably more generous than we've had in recent years, but the inflation environment is higher. So the two are the most. Public safety, class of recruitment are, are attempting to keep up with attrition, fire. We're not having no recruitment problems. There are issues to make sure it gets addressed. If attrition with recruitment remains difficult, the police share our corrections. We're better than this last year, but still difficult. We are not assuming an increase in subways funds in '24, subways fees in '24, but there will probably need to be in the following years. And stormwater management. This is the stormwater enterprise fund that still has a long-term deficit. And the tax rate will need to be adjusted sometime in the coming year or two, the next couple of years. May not have to be done in '24, but certainly in the next couple of years. It is not just the current, this is the other piece on the state. I mean, I'm not criticizing the state, I'm simply saying that the requirements for stormwater are extensive. And we've already had a commitment, a quarterly announcement over the next several years to, in terms of stormwater requirements. We have a new permit, which I'm sure everyone will talk about, which requires us to do even more. Now, they have the legal official that down somewhat. But the state requirements for stormwater management and practical issues that we have related to flood management means that that's going to be a giant issue. And I do just want to make a comment that regardless of what we decide, British Bridges County are priorities. And we, you know, obviously we make decisions in this county about things that we think are important. The two gigantic items that will, I guess the two elements in the room will be education and stormwater. Those are just things that are enormous and will take administration. Next slide first. The, as I mentioned, I mentioned about education funding, so I wanted to talk more about that. Debt service payments will continue to increase, but they're not, but they're in a reasonable amount. We have to talk a little bit more about that. The, these are basically things we're already committed to and so forth. Inflation, David talked about that, unemployment, David talked about that. And I will say that the only point I would make in the bottom of this is that the risk of recession is high. We don't, my personal belief is that we will not stand early, this is, this is one of my thoughts, right? Is that I don't think we're likely to come to a recession. We will probably go to a flat growth mode, maybe technically in a recession, or technically not. But I don't think we're going to see a deep drop. I think the companies are growth. So it's going to be painful, but let's see. But that's, that, you know, there's 100 people, we're telling you the different, different things, and that's just progress. But here's the thing, which is a little bit, a little, that will make the argument that recession is more likely. We have right now some kind of inverted yield curve. And basically, right now, what that means is that if you, if you get a treasury bond for three months, you borrow, basically you're getting a three-month treasury bond, or up to two-year treasury bond, you're going to get more money for that than if you do, than if you were getting a 10 or 20-year treasury bond. Basically, short-term rates, you're getting more money in short-term rates than you are in long-term, which says that people, when that happens, it's, it's, every time you have that inverted yield curve, you don't necessarily have a recession. But every time you receive a recession, you always have an inverted yield curve. time you get that recession, you always have an inverted yield curve. So that's worrying, um, but it's not, um, but we'll have to watch it. We will just have to watch it, because that is, you know, the, the, that the increase in the federal reserve rate may be part of that, but still, it's a worry. Okay, talk about pensions a little bit. We are, so we're underfunded, but we're on track, we're, we're in a good track. We're up to sixty-one percent, um, of our pensions funded. We were down as low as fifty in the plan, and we are continuing, we are on track for, um, deputy sheriff supplemental for twenty-twenty-five and out to correction offices for the plan in twenty-forty-five. There are a number, these are the big ones, but these are some of them. We actually have like a dozen plans, even though we technically open to three. And those plans are, we're aiming to get almost fully funded, reach a hundred percent. But that means we need to continue, we cannot cut that off, but fully funding our pensions. We need to continue to, to keep doing that, uh, to protect our employees, our retirees, and to make sure that the county's financial position, particularly property, you know, that's protected. And we'll say, one thing that we have done is that at the same time, we have reduced our assumed rate of return to six point seven five percent. A few years ago, we were as high as eight and seven and a half, a quarter, seven, no, it's six seventy-five. Basically, we have actuarial, uh, studies and we have advisors trying to match up with what's happening in the world. I think this is a question, it's a little tough to do, but it's more worth it. And I do want to, another, but final goal, and I do want to sound the risk management fund, and I know, uh, there was a recent, we were in the council, it's last year, uh, so discussion, and we're on the risk management fund. Uh, we have, uh, which is in the red, but is a deficit, um, a deficit that has been building through the years. We have made adjustments in that. I feel like the finance department for lots of analysis that they did. Um, and, uh, so we're now actually, if you turn the corner, it will probably take a decade or two to get that completely to be one, but we've turned the corner and now I think we're in a funding model that we keep this in a good position. Next slide. Okay, general fund. So, uh, we have, if you look at the top, you'll see our, um, our forecast, and we see where we were, how much money we had in twenty-one, our actuals, three billion seven hundred million. Um, we're, uh, twenty-two, we have, uh, uh, the, uh, we had an improved budget, uh, I believe we have an unaudited budget, unaudited return of four point four billion approved this year, uh, four billion two, our estimate is four two, four billion two thirty. We have, uh, and we do have expenditures. We have a lot of things related to, uh, important educations, COVID money, that made that number jump in twenty-two. That's probably the reason we hit this artificial high number for the final number in twenty-two, that's extra court money. Forecast for twenty-four is, at this point, is four four seven one, and we'll talk about that a little bit in a minute. Five thousand, look at the bottom of the percentage at the bottom of the chart. So we were at, uh, reaching our total restricted, unrestricted committed, unsigned was thirteen point four percent. We went into the COVID, this was going, as we were going into COVID, we anticipated that we would drop dramatically. As you know, everybody saw much more revenue and much, much more favorable support. So we basically, uh, are about, came out of it about where we started. So, uh, we're looking, this is particularly important now because, and I know Stephen, we've been talking about the change in the, uh, really changing the way we're making these assessments, but, um, but basically, we, we're in the same place we were, we started. So we are, we held well, and then they were up, and then they were down, um, and I think we're about at the right place. Next slide. Okay, so this is based on our spending affordability report, uh, that came out in October. We have another spending affordability report, which comes out at the end of December, or usually, usually the first week of January. And it's, and I think it will be a little different, but this is where the line I'd like you to look at is, um, the, um, subtotal counting sources. You'll see that, um, we are projecting five point nine percent increase, or we were projecting a five point nine percent increase in our revenue from twenty-three to twenty-four, which will be the healthiest fortune in a number of years. But of course, we have inflation, and we have those inflationary items, so they kind of balance. Now, I do want to say, so when we talk about property taxes and why they're going to, they're pretty sick, we're not worried about it. Income taxes have been wild, uh, but they've just been wild. I mean, I've never, I've never seen them flex the waves so violently. And this November, we saw a decline, a real decline in our revenue, in our income tax revenue, uh, as did almost every county in the state. And, uh, we, we're going to be going back and looking at, we are looking at that, we are not projecting that, uh, we will see a decline in income taxes year after year altogether. I mean, I just don't think that's the case. But I think we will be revising our estimates for twenty-three and for twenty-four, uh, because I expect that we probably are a little too optimistic for our income tax revenues estimates for, uh, going forward. On the other hand, there are some other things that we might have to look at that may help that a little bit. So I don't expect a radically different number, but I expect that, um, it could be, be in the December number, it'll be slightly different, probably slightly lower, uh, in terms of projection. Next slide please. Okay, I think I've really covered those items. So let's go to slide two. So one thing that has helped us is that the, that, uh, the whole harness provision in, for the, um, video checking law revenue has been, was eliminated that state. What that was, was we had to, um, when the M G R facility opened, um, the, there was a clause in state law that said, okay, Emerald County and, uh, Baltimore City, the, the, the casinos there, the revenue coming to those jurisdictions cannot decline below what it was in that casino, in this casino. We, I think, are relatively conscious of that, whatever the crystals can make up to make sure. And every year, we had to make, we lost some money. They changed the law now, it's really coming out of state, I think it's coming out of law, but the name of, the state is taking care of that, we're not taking care of that, so that's not. Since the casinos were reopened, gaming activities were strongly expected, and this is true nationally, I will just say that since the casinos, since the pandemic, everybody seems to want to get out. And I've talked to people, not just in Bureau, but in other states, who have casinos or are seeing once a year, they're all seeing much higher activity. And I am concerned that some of the, we may have some, not some, some social side to that, but we are seeing more. So we're saying, we're, our twenty-three estimate assumes net, uh, revenue to the county from the L T A, I think, to a total of thirty-seven point four million. And we're assuming slightly lowering that revenue next year, a little bit of an extra budget, but we're gonna look at that, maybe, maybe a little better if we buy, if we look at this one for a second. Next slide is, um, this, spending affordability committee has, uh, is making a recommendation. Right now, we have a, um, a five percent and two percent, we have charter reserve policy of five percent, and policy reserve policy of two percent, and then we have those sign in front of that, which generally is about, um, four percent, four, about five percent. They are recommending that the, that over time, we, uh, change the policy reserve from two percent to, we raise it a little bit to five percent. This would put us more in line with the other cap, major counties. For example, most of the major counties are, now, every, uh, listen major counties probably in the slide with that, have policies that put it around in percent combined. Everybody does different rules, but something like that. In addition, um, the, and it's been a change in, uh, rating agencies that makes it probably more desirable because they have significantly altered, uh, what they give credit for. And what is, which is, it's always turned well on, is, uh, at least always, since the last fifteen, fourteen years, it's done well on, is the way we operate, and you get less credit for that, which is, that's, that's. And then, let me try to go over the amber to talk a little bit about the.
Good morning. Um, as David mentioned, in F-121 and F-122, the county can see the largest issues was other health, economic and health effects of COVID nineteen. Um, one of those water programs was in there, in the rescue campaign act. In March of twenty twenty-one, the federal government passed the legislation and allocated a hundred and seventy-six point six million dollars to Port George County. Um, the county executive, the county council, we worked together to develop our spending plan for, um, that funding, which is outlined on the slide. Um, three of them working together, we had identified about seventy-five percent of the money for allocated to direct service to county residents, which was the largest portion of that funding was allocated for the health department at forty-nine point six million dollars. The health department has used that funding towards addressing vaccinations, um, supporting our federally qualified health centers, um, expanding behavioral health services in the county, as well as eventually they will be looking to, um, replace the shufflely built in where the direct services to county residents. Um, the, the next largest component of our spending has been on addressing stormwater, managing and flood protection issues in the community with the Department of Environment and the Department of Food Works, um, which we lose to agencies, a third of two million dollars has been allocated to various projects throughout the county, um, as well as a flood study, um, to kind of build the roadmap in how to address the largest of the major issues that Stanley mentioned, um, will be impacting the county in the future. Um, the third largest component, um, which I think clearly highlights what David was talking about, is really, um, how to improve our workforce in Port George County and support jobs to residents. Um, nineteen million dollars. Provided by employee shortages, um, E C and F S C will be receiving funding for business and technical assistance, as well as the R C Humanities Council, um, is funded under that particular category in order to help the county's economy. I think the next important type of services is the nonprofit support. The county, um, is validating monies of a million dollars to support the Dunn violence prevention program that is managed by the Office of Community Relations, um, as well as working with nonprofit organizations to increase our capacity, especially as there is to, um, to look, which was in the main, significantly impact to county residents during the pandemic. Um, other items, um, as with social services, that will be supporting, um, a more, a more nice shelter, which we know, um, persons who are experiencing homelessness is an important issue in the county, and we're using all those resources to support that particular effort. Um, other items that are from here that were really identified and approved, county government operations, um, the Department of Information, sorry, all this information and technology, received, um, a significant money of close to sixteen million dollars to really focus more on digitization, um, working with the Department of D I, uh, O H R R M, the Sheriff's Department, uh, those agencies who are very, uh, paper-heavy in their operations, and really working with them to digitize those records in order to automate some of the processes that the county has, um, during the year, and we had to shift because of remote work was a part of the county. And then I'll just say, uh, mentioned essential services, and enhanced cleaning of our facilities, um, was also a major part of it, as well as, um, providing to county, to county employees. Um, the next slide just details, uh, the spending of this funding for December seventh. Um, part of the federal guidelines is that county has to oblige the funding by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and it must be expended by December, um, thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um, and so our push is to make sure that agencies have, you know, by twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, that the latest agency has some capital projects that, um, will probably take longer, a lot of the protection projects that, um, the Department of Environment has, as well as the Health Department, the Sherrill replacement. Um, so to date, um, the county, the partners have spent fifty-four point six million dollars. Um, as expected, uh, hazard gauge was, um, approved in several of the, of all of the labor, marketing events, um, was implemented in twenty twenty-two, um, and the total cost of the hazard gauge, twenty-one, sixty million dollars. The health department, as expected, will be leaving second with the, a second largest project, as they have been to vaccination services, um, for several, for several, um, at this point. Um, and one thing to think about, and I probably failed to mention on the private side, was the housing department received money for the, um, right of first refusal, um, projects, and they closed their first projects, probably in the last thirteen, thirty, forty-five days. And so they have, uh, expended seven million dollars on that particular project, um, and which is, you know, a model that, that the council, the county executive proposed to hold above and has, just to check. Other agencies that are identified on here, the, uh, employee shortages, with the rapid employment program that had been operating, um, for the joining of. with the rapid employment program that had been operating for the year of FY22, as well as the other agencies, the Gundolz programs, the operations have been spending on from 2021 to 2023. And we are definitely projecting that as we approach the end of FY23, when this spring happens, more construction can occur for a lot of the capital projects, we will see new progress in the county for these projects.
I think the points I did, we want to put a, just to highlight on a trip to scale because the ARCA funds are very important, they get a lot of attention. But over the four years that we spend out the ARCA funds, they are about 1% of the total of funds that county will be spending from all sources. So it's important to understand because what is important funds? They are additions to things and they're not fundamentally chase you, you're a whole. That let me try to clarify.
Okay, so we'll shift over to discussing property taxes and tax events. Can everybody hear me? So the county provides about 20 different tax credits for businesses in the county. The most heavily used property tax credit is the Enterprise Zone Tax Credit, and that's primarily because there are incentives both at the state level and the county level for businesses that qualify for this particular credit. It provides a 10-year credit against, a 10-year credit that's 80% of the eligible assessment for the first five years, and then for the next five years, it increases 10% annually. If the business is located within a focused area, which is generally a distressed area, the tax credit is 80% for the entire 10-year period. It also provides 80% tax credit against the business's personal property as well. Currently, we have about 50 businesses that receive credits under this particular program. The next credit is the revitalization tax credit for commercial businesses, and it's, we provide about 10 businesses with this particular credit. It encourages county development. We're providing a five-year credit, credits provided. But there are also businesses that receive tax credits for various activities, such as helping brownfield sites, businesses that either manufacture, distribute, or market green products. Another credit we have is the High Performance Tax Credit, which is for buildings that obtain certifications for energy efficiency. And then also, you'll see that there are many tax credits for which there is no activity. Some of these credits, we've had activity in the past, and then others, we've never had applications admitted for them. We also provide residential credits. Stanley and David mentioned, and folks are generally familiar with the Home State Tax Credit, which helps homeowners deal with the large assessment increases that the county has been experiencing. And it provides a credit against the portion of the increase in that property's assessment. And that increase, what it does is that it caps the amount that can be taxed by the change in C P I from year to year up to 5%. Another tax credit that assists homeowners is the homeowner's tax credit, which allows households with annual incomes less than $60,000 to pay taxes based on their gross income. An additional heavily used tax credit is the Alternative Energy Tax Credit, which provides a $5,000 property tax credit to reimburse homeowners for installing solar panels on their properties. This program has been really popular since it started, and right now, the lead period for the property tax credit is 10 years. One of the factors that contributes to that is that there's a $500,000 annual funding limit on this credit. So just to recap, county provides various residential and business tax credits combined. They provide close to $100 million in annual tax savings to businesses and residents. Most of it you can see is in the residential tax credit area. So there was new legislation passed this year, a couple of things we'll talk about this morning. One of them is the senior tax credit, which has got a lot of publicity. And it's a one-time, five-year credit. It goes against 20% of the property tax bill for seniors that are 65 years and older, who've lived in their homes for 10 years or more, and whose assessed values are $500,000 or less. The tax credit goes into effect this coming July, and we're expecting a really high number of applications these first few years, but particularly this year. So we're making plans and preparing to provide an online application portal, as well as a paper application for those who would need it. And our hope is to also dedicate staffing resources to ensure that the applications I process look efficiently and timely. And we hope to begin to start accepting applications in the spring. Another new tax credit that was passed through 2022 is the tax credit against business personal property for new startups that are five years or younger. The tax credit is for businesses that have 15 employees or less and that are located in the Beltway, or within a quarter mile of a metro station, or within a primary or secondary north sector. The business must also be registered and good standing with the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. So just a distinction between real property and personal property. Real property is a parcel of land, everything that's around it, the improvements to that. And real property includes both commercial and residential property. This particular chart shows the mix between residential and commercial properties in the county. There's been a lot of discussion about really increasing the amount of commercial properties that we have in the county, because commercial properties tend to have higher assessments and generate larger tax revenue without some of the required levels of service that go along with residential developments. For FY23, you can see that the county's real property generated about $1.1 billion in revenue. 29% of that is attributable to our commercial tax base. And then this slide shows the different things that support businesses. This is the business personal property that we discussed earlier. There's some tax credits that are against business personal property, and you know, one of the distinctions between real property and personal property is that personal property is the items that are used in business, for businesses to basically conduct business. It includes tangible property like furniture, fixtures, fixtures, machinery, tools, supplies, all of those things that are used to conduct business. Each year in April, registered businesses in the county file a business personal property tax return with the state. And then the state actually does evaluation of that property and sends that evaluation to the county where we tax it, and then, you know, build a business for those taxes. Roughly $78 million was collected in business personal property taxes in, or, well, actually in FY22. So Stephen, there's some information about our debt.
Good morning. Stephen, we have directed plans. I just wanted to perhaps step back, step back just to show this chart once again, and just the incremental steps we've taken since 2012 with our residential, commercial mix. As you can see, 2012 was 74% residential and 26% sexually and commercial. And 23, eleven years later, we're at 28% to 29% commercial. As Lynn indicated, it does have an impact on the level of services that are provided when the commercial mix is heavily residential, with more education and other public safety type services will be essential for more residential mix versus commercial mix. And then, so we're making some progress there. And then you will hear a warm, an egg on developing team there in the staff in some of those types of items, as that is a focus and it was something that we talked about with that team as well. Lynn also talked about the senior tax credit, and you'll be hearing more from us on that. We hope to do somewhat of a fair or something like that, just to launch it and publicity out there when that time comes. And when we're ready to, we just want to make sure that our proceeds are aware of it and that it's, you know, propagated and that there is sufficient publicity, as well as, as help. So we'll have a fair at the county and we'll assist seniors and assist that operation with complete performance. I'm going to just wrap up the GoMe Finance presentation by talking about our debt picture. I'll take a look forward at what we're projecting, and then take a look back at what we've done. And then I'll touch on some of the essential things that are, surround the whole debt environment as it pertains to rating agencies and the impact of ratings analysis and the cost of funds, and how to price our fiscal picture going forward, fiscal stability in the county. As this slide indicates, there is $1.5 billion general obligation debt for FY23 through FY29. And we have an 8% debt service cap. And this slide, the bottom of the slide, we'll talk a little bit, depict a little bit more about that. But what we hope to do with this 8% policy cap is just use it as an indicator, a warning flag of when we are approaching it and when we will cross it, because we don't, you know, every entity at the household, every organization has to manage its debt responsibly to ensure that your debt service does not overtake regular operational costs. And for us, that's education, that's what we say to all the other cost of services that we provide here in the county. So you have to make sure that your debt picture in the long run is well managed and it does not, your debt service costs is not increased to the point where it starts to consume other aspects of our operating budget. So this slide just lets us know that it's fiscal 27. And we are, we will be crossing that threshold as projected currently, that 8% threshold after our issues of our fiscal 25 general obligation bond debt. So that's just something to bear in mind. And of course, we will be managing the capital program, and the key to the basis is about what's important and what's not. And as we go forward, we'll be getting more of that as we enter to the budget process over the next year and throughout the spring, we'll be here for that as well. The debt service cap ratio is projected to peak in fiscal 27, at 1.43, after the proposed J V issues is scheduled through fiscal 26. So this is based on our, we do a debt capacity study. Our debt manager helper works with O B producing a debt capacity study. And what we do is just, we look at how it gets spent, how quickly they can spend, because there are limitations on issuing taxes and debt. Once you issue, you've got to spend it within a certain timeframe. So we have to ensure that we don't do a taxes, then issues, and then have money sitting on there because then we have to pay. There's money that you'll have to allocate to the feds if you do that. So it is a type of managed program, and we do essentially 80% of the proposed general obligation bond debt is what we'll, would go to market for and get financing for. Talked a little bit earlier about the 8%, and here you can see the graph where depicted as far as when we will be approaching that 8% cap. And for the new members, this 8% cap is 8% of the general fund revenues. We don't, again, we don't want our debt service costs, this annual cost we paid to principal interest, we don't want that exceeding 8% for general revenues, as that is an indicator of, that, it's not, it's not indicative necessarily of stress, but it's just a warning flag, early warning flag that you need to start watching how quickly you're going to protect your debt base, because it is now crossing that threshold. We have the other slide, some of the things there that should increase the debt service percentage. And there's new projects, of course, inflationary costs that David spoke to earlier, destructions and so, construction costs, et cetera. Rising interest rates are extended, judged on some of what's happened with rating agencies and how they're evaluating public municipalities and other public issues, how they evaluate them, because depending on the rating that they get, that's going to determine your cost of funds. So rising interest rates are running, which are currently in, and can also affect how quickly we get to this threshold, and I mean, getting cost of funds, we're working at a higher rate. Reduced revenues also could have an effect. What could reduce it is on the other side. So you need to do more pay go over that sort of things as part of capital projects that were obviously taking out less debt, or we should be taking out less debt and increasing on the pay go side. So that will reduce it, the deferred projects or increased revenues will have a positive effect. The company has a 20-year liquidity measure, which we pay off for general obligation debt. And that is favorably by the rating agencies, because it shows fiscal health, it indicates a well-managed debt program. And so the county has a long history of paying off its general obligation, general fund type debt over the 20-year liquidity, as opposed to a longer amortization period, 30 years or so. It just gives more flexibility also if we have to structure refunding on the back end of that, of that particular issue, as we can go out to market and do refunding, home parlay, this is, you know, just refinancing. So we can go out to the market and do a refunding on the back end of these, the way we currently structure our debt, in the hopes of getting the lower interest rate at some point in the future. So let's move on to the next slide. The next slide just indicates what our proposed general fund is, school facilities, search charge debt issues is going to look like year by year. From 23, we have a $208 million bond issues all the way out through 29, and pretty even throughout as far as our client hits, their issues is. We will use that plus there's a school search charge aspect to it as the title of this slide. There's a school search charge, which is what is associated with the government, and that also just to prevent some of these debt issues and maybe against this. Let's take a look back now at some of what we've done from fiscal 16 through fiscal 22 in the area. This is a real chart, and I'm going to look at general obligation debt, look at some stormwater and solid waste type debt issues. As we go through. As we go through, I'll kind of find some of what those things fund. The general fund that is essentially funding roads, bridges, libraries, health facilities, refurbishing and major renovations that have to be done to county structures. So that's being funded out of your general fund, your stormwater. That's going to be funding infrastructure related to plumbing, maintenance, rehabs and dishes, blood channels, et cetera. So that's what that will be funding. And I'll get into that a little bit more. But on the graph here, you can see that our plan, our issuances over the past year, the latest one fiscal twenty two, we have a two million, two billion, yes, we have Y twenty two. And you can see the trajectory remains somewhat even as we go from year to year. And again, this is all associated with this trying to manage the debt to our revenues and what we think is worth. Solid waste, this, I'll go through these very quickly is just to give you an idea of what's being funded from year to year. And solid waste touches on any kind of infrastructure associated with landfills and waste type recycling type facilities. And you can see the year to year funding from fiscal sixteen to fiscal twenty. Stormwater, we touched on earlier and as far as what is entailed in stormwater funding and again, just to paint what is probably from year to year. Cost of basic agreements, this is, certainly you might not be familiar with cost, cost of certificates of participation and some method of financing that we use primarily to do with equipment, crew, trucks, fire trucks, any of the public safety equipment, hopefully, thankfully, associated with the county. But we've also used it to, or contributions we pass to the medical facilities, we want their hospital system. And we've done very strong pieces of cost of financing that for financing counties contributions to those efforts for the joint efforts with other jurisdictions. And then more quality loans that is loans that we can get at highly reduced rates through a distinct revolving fund and we use that to for the litigation efforts with stormwater runoff and so forth. So that's a more quality loan program. And we have anticipated debt issuances with that coming in the next year or so. Okay, the proposed C I P program for fiscal twenty four through twenty nine. Again, they have the system of keeping it feasible and affordable. I'll just go through a couple of slides to show you how we measure it with all the jurisdictions in the debt. And as we look at this, I just want to point out that the rating agencies are ordinary, they're, it's not only debt that they're concerned about, it's really your long term financial obligations and your fiscal commitments. So they'll see through what's technically called debt, you know, the ones that get enacted through a referendum, those before the voters in the referendum get disacted. Those are technically satisfied definition of debt, but then they're also looking at other long term fiscal commitments that the county has made because that really is what they're concerned about. So just to point out that rating agencies are taking a look at overall fiscal health and overall fiscal commitment. In this slide here, you'll see how we compared our some neighboring jurisdictions. Around all thirteen point seven percent of debt service is in the expenditures and then the percentage lies at nine point eight percent. So we are on one of the higher ones as far as our debt service expenditures, the level of debt that we have out there and how much of our, of our year to year operating funds that it consumes. This is what Sam had mentioned earlier about the rating agencies taking a closer look or around the changing their methodology and who is in particular, changing their methodology to how they evaluate an organization coming before their, or rating. What they have devalued is our regional connection to D C and some of the institutional factors of management and usually they have a raw score that they give us just based on what the numbers say, what your fund balance is and what your revenues are and what your expenses are, what your long term commitments are. So they give you a raw score, assign a rating based on that. Then they have what they're called notchy factors and then they use those notchy factors to either move you up or move you down. So with those notchy factors, the company has been able to get, plug its raw score because we, the raw score may not get us that triple A rating much just because of management, the connection to the eastern metro area and other notchy elements that they have in their methodology, we're able to get our triple A rating. Now, some of those things have been evaluated, the movies evaluation. And so that puts a pressure on our rating as far as maintaining your triple A rating. So that's something we'll have to bear in mind as we heard about, Stan is talking about the move towards a higher fund balance is recommended by the board committee. That's something that ought to be given serious consideration in light of what is happening here with some of these rating agencies about how much more their conservative theory has to, as they don't want to put themselves at risk as far as getting a high rating and that's something that to the institution that appreciates the title. So if you're having this pressure across the board with the rating agencies and therefore we're just going to have to be more visibly sound in the way we grow our, our debt path and our overall fiscal management. And with that, let me just end it back over to you, Stan, with a summary of our presentation.
Thank you, Steve. So I know we're going to go long. So simply, I just want to put out that we points here, we're volatile times, but we're cautious that we're, we're volatile times. We think we are in a reasonable position, except be very cautious. We are not assuming continued inflation, high inflation. We are constrained by our basically debt, but also our resources. And we must, in this environment, we need to be cautious in terms of additional spending and debt because our revenue sources are under stripped. And that's basically it. And we will be happy to take questions and that's early.
Given perfect timing, you're scheduled to finish at eleven thirty and did. They've been no time for a question. Well, Chair, well played, Mr. Chair. I think we'll run over fifteen minutes and this is too important not to have questions. So Angie Rogers would take the outside and have a conversation. Angie, her time. I'm going to start with one question to be quick and Ms. Olson, that's Ms. Harrison. The discussion about increasing the policy reserve over a period of years. I'm pretty sure I didn't answer this question, but listen to the table. The charter sets eighty five percent requirement. The policy was set by county executives, county council, basically proving the budget. There's no official, that is the policy, it's not a written policy, it's not legislation or anything like that, right?
It's, it is, it's been, it's been policy. It has been the policy since, over this, over since the production, many years.
There's been a change in two percent policy since nineteen. My question is, who sets that policy? Who has the authority to change it from two percent to another number?
The executive. The family of the tax has been the executive, the council, group.
Is that some of the questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for the presentations. There's a lot of great information there and definitely I want to talk offline about some of these. But I'm interested to keep the questions. One is, I'm very happy to see the alternative tax credit and so wildly successful. It's, it's arguing that there's a ten year backlog on it. So I think we may want to adjust that a little bit so that's understand the fiscal package, the raise that's going to be a hundred point five, what that, what that means. So we can, you can talk to my office about that. Super, that's the regional sponsor of that, twelve year tickets. You can sponsor this, Will. That's a little bit too old, just. I haven't given credit this one, although. So another question, can you please briefly explain the home state property tax credit? Just briefly explain in terms of the, I know there's only a certain amount that you can build up to and I know you talk about it, it's tied to inflation or CPI, I guess.
Sure. So the mechanics of the home state property tax credit are that whatever the change in CPI is from year to year, basically that sets a percentage that you're going to get taxes on that increase is the increase that you're going to pay taxes on. And anything above that increase, you're going to get is a tax credit. So let's just say your property taxes were, you know, a hundred, you know, on a hundred thousand dollars and then your, your assessment went up and three percent is the change in CPI. This year, you're going to pay taxes on a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the rest of it, whatever it increased, if it increased to one twenty and if it increased to two hundred, you're only going to pay taxes on a hundred and thirty thousand.
And we have the ability to set that policy, right? And we can make it less than that. We can make it, one question, right, or some of the tests. Then that's a policy, the CPI is something that's within the legislated process, is that right?
Well, it's a little, there was an interesting discussion that happens past year, but the, the maximum is set by the voters and we have the, we had the conference to get the state to, to, yeah. Below that, it's a local decision that is done by, and that's, that's set by the local, by the charter. Now, there was an argument made in the council that, I think council probably answers better, but that you couldn't choose to do lower than that. I don't know, there was also an argument that you couldn't. So I don't get into the legal, the lawyers society.
Okay, we started with the lawyers then.
But operationally, what we have the jury for since this was put in place is if inflation, whatever the inflation was, up to five percent has been the limit. So if inflation was two percent and is at, you know, a certain month, it has to be checked, then it's two percent, three percent, it's three percent, it's one percent, it's one percent.
Okay, all right. I wanted to talk all the way about that going forward then. And then the last question on that is if a house is investor property, because I know we're getting a lot of, all across the country, we're getting a lot of houses that are bought by these investors, it's large scale, well, it's not always large scale, sometimes it's individuals. How are we sure that you're capturing everybody, you know, so that they are not, you know, getting the home state tax credit? I mean, I know you have to apply to the state and all that, but how do we ensure that, that, you know, all, there's so many derivatives that are getting eroded and move the homeownership because we're getting so many investors. How do, how are we ensuring that?
So that's implied on the deed transfer. So the deed transfers are what really impact a home state credit being taken off of a property. So if the property was already receiving a home state credit and then it was bought by an investor, bought by someone who is not going to actually live in that property, then that deed comes through our office and then it gets reported at the state level, that is when that home state credit is actually taken off of the property. Now, if they don't actually record a deed, you could have situations where, you know, the home state credit stays on there or, you know, we have seen where a deed, a property might transfer, the deed is not processed until that new owner rehabs the property and then sells it and then a deed is processed. So, you know, those could be instances where, you know, you might not be able to capture or capture people in the home state credit. But the compliance environment is really difficult to enforce.
Right, right. Let's just, and we'd love to, and talk with news. We've only so much time here today, but we'd love to hear more about that. And then my last question to Chair is refunding the debt. Are we, with rates going up, are we projecting that we're not going to be able to do as much of that or benefit as much of that or how does that look? How's that affect our fiscal?
Yeah, it would be the same assumption. So we have our potential, and also look at outstanding issuances and then compare what the available market rate is if you want to go back out to market. It has to be in a callable period also. So some debt is not callable until after ten years. So if we're in a callable period, then we can, we can go to market and do a current funding. But that's resulting from no longer, we can no longer do those other tax things that basis because of two thousand sixteen law change. But other than that, so we just evaluate what the market is offering. Higher interest rate in market, if we're looking back to debt that was issued in a lower environment, then there's just less opportunity for your company.
And I think that those opportunities were also being structured.
Yes. And it depends on the coupons too of that because we have, we don't have full of the charities, we are doing normal charities or serial charities as a result of that, that the other years, depending on the structure of that, if the, if the other year coupons are higher, then it may still create some opportunity. It just affects how the debt issuance is structured at the time of issues.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to miss the point, but you want to know what you covered in the rating of the others and who we are with that.
Yes, we did. This day, I was running back every day, I was trying to catch up. Yes, we did. Basically, I said we're, the total, it's on access slide nineteen of the presentation. And basically, what we said is that we are at the top, we have five percent, we're projecting the M twenty four at five percent restricted, two, which is the, that charter, then two percent committed and then about six point six percent of other signs of. So we're talking, uh, we're basically looking at, now, when we were at, when we started, when we started the pandemic situation, we were 13.4% of all three of those combined. Now we're at 13.6. So basically flat over that time as, as a percentage. The numbers have changed a little bit. Uh, that's basically our, we, uh, if you look at slide 19, and we can go over it, and one, you tell.
I got, I got pretty good. I got pretty fast. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. This is really important, this presentation, as we all know. Um, I'm curious, I missed something, probably like, uh, as you guys just did. But we talked about the projected decrease in income taxes. But there was also note that it's lower paid jobs that have not been filled. So I can't figure out why we anticipate a decrease in income taxes if our unemployment rate isn't awful. It was tiny bit higher, but it's not awful. And then people who aren't, the jobs that aren't getting filled are lower paid jobs. So, I missed it.
First, let me say, maybe I didn't say that right. When I say decrease, I'm not saying the total amount of income taxes. We decrease, but we're, we're thinking that the growth is less than we were thinking it was.
Okay, I got that. That's, that's that, thanks. I'm glad we shared that, that. And, um, I guess I look at what we keep doing for our housing stock. The more that we have housing stock, the people who make money might want to come live in. It might help us with our income taxes.
Sure.
Um, and then the, oh, you mentioned about the whole harmless provision and with the, um, with the casino money. And obviously, you know, that got set aside, but now it's being paid just from state money. But you theorized, I don't know if you noticed or not, but it could be part of lottery money?
I think it is, it is.
But Rich Jordan's paying a lot, was spend a lot, I should say, on the lottery. So I'm not sure how much of the watch comes out of that.
Well, Rich Jordan's do spend the lottery, lottery, but the, uh, what, uh, but that's money that is state revenue. So it's being paid out of the state budget, but it's not.
Well, still not fair. And then my last question for you, Stephen. Uh, you, you express some concern about our operating and about California change could negatively impact us. Are you concerned that we actually will experience an increase in operating with increasing amount of money we have to spend in debt?
Um, as of now, I'm not concerned that it will, um, decrease our operating. Because the, and the Reagan, you see that was, that methodology that we just discussed. Uh, they have already contacted the issuers who they're going to review. And, uh, we were not contacted by them. Uh, so I'm just, um, pointing you out as a matter of fact, that, uh, these methodologies are changing. And it's putting down the pressure on our rating. Um, but, um, so, so it's just something we have to bring in mind as we go forward. And, um, as we look at our CIP, as we look at our debt issuers, as we look at our operating budget, and how we all work together and play together, it's something that we have to be aware of. But, um, as of now, we have not been contacted by that particular rating issue. So, uh, we do not believe at this point that, uh, we are at risk of losing that for the year. But it's just, uh, looking ahead and just being, uh, sound fiscal, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Um, once again, thank you for this presentation. It was a lot of information. Um, when you talked about the money from the casino, how now we'll get that money, is that already happened, we've seen that happen next year? Or we've already seen that change?
We're seeing a change now.
And what kind of change is that, like from a dollar amount to a currency loss rate? And how much we're different?
About eighty million a year. Now, that, of course, has to be spread out with the money because it's changing.
Right. Okay. And then I had a question about some of the, um, credits. Um, some of these are new to me, but I was seeing that it had zero participation. Um, a couple that just, you know, um, jumped out of the business incubator, um, the grocery store, and the new jobs. And so I was curious, you did say that some have, you know, never seen participation, does not see participation now. Um, could you note for those that have never seen participation, or?
Yeah, the three, the three that you mentioned have not seen participation. I believe the business incubator actually, when it was initially passed, which I believe was, you know, maybe 2010 or somewhere around there. I, I believe there was one business at that time. And I, I happened to be in the office at the time. And I, I believe one business benefited from it. I will say this, so, you know, we've been looking at the grocery store tax credit and at, you know, other credits to see, you know, like maybe why they haven't been utilized. And part of it is that there are better benefits in enterprise level tax credit. You know, it's a 10-year credit. It's like 80% of the property, um, tax, the county culture, the property tax bill. There's also some income tax, um, components of it that are given at the state level, friendlies. And so, you know, if you're looking at a credit that's a five-year credit, and it's a lower amount, um, and you're comparing it to this other, you know, 10-year credit that also has other benefits, then many times that will, you know, you can't get two different credits at the same time. So, you know, many businesses will just elect to, um, apply for the enterprise level or the revitalization or some other credit that's, that doesn't have as many requirements. And, you know, they provide the same or greater benefits to them.
That's a good point. That's something I think is for myself, maybe off line, I'd be really interested in learning about, um, those barriers or reasons why, like tweaks or changes we can make to some of these, especially for my district. We don't have a lot of grocery stores. Um, I would be interested in what we could be doing differently, um, to incentivize those. And then I have a question about, um, what's the vacant, um, real estate tax credit? I'm not familiar with that. Actually. Your residential tax credit?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to get back to you. I don't, Cindy's in the audience, and she's our treasurer. So I don't know if she, if she has any, um, information. But otherwise, I can definitely get back to you.
Okay.
I'll get the phone, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If they should mention back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrison.
Hello. Okay. Um, good morning, everyone. I have a question for David. In the presentation that I've mentioned that there was a rapid increase in construction costs year after year. Uh, and I guess my question is, under what circumstance in a way makes sense for us to, you know, consider pausing some of the construction? Uh, and, and you, uh, maybe shift those dollars to something where we can get better with our investment, and if it's a priority, if that ever happens, does that make sense?
Um, I would say then there, um, there could be a, it really would be a project for a project basis. We have, and you've actually asked a question that's difficult to get in any case. Um, if the cost of construction is really compounded or less treated by 3%. Um, and, um, in terms of our available funds, we're going to have to stay, even, even increasing in some. We're going to have to make some hard decisions about which projects may have to be delayed because no one will be able to do everything, especially with previous plan. Um, unfortunately, I don't think it's really going to be the savings, if, in the sense of spending less money than being able to achieve it. It's certainly going to be being able to use existing funds and covering, um, fewer projects. Um, so I think it is something to ask.
Thank you. And then another question, uh, this is from Amber. Um, you mentioned our programs, uh, and you mentioned the non-dollar contribution program. Um, yeah, I think I have some slide, either 24 or 25.
Yes. So that is, um, that non-dollar also includes other, um, other money for non-profit capacity as well as the, um, the gun violence prevention, I believe, is recent coverage of it. That was allocated for that program that's being implemented.
Okay. Is it possible to get, um, a more kind of breakdown of specific initiatives that are in these different categories? And also what the, uh, program evaluations are for it? Um, because, you know, non-dollar is possible for, you know, non-profit sector. I just want to make sure that we are, like, committing the best programs we can, and I know your office has a great job at making sure we meet all the different, you know, requirements, um, you know, to, to achieve the goal. And I guess I'm just interested in seeing those evaluations as well.
Well, absolutely. We do have, um, we're stepping into federal government. One is our annual report, which includes some of the performance indicators that various agencies have identified. Those will be an aspect.
Oh, thank you. Um, Mr. Fisher, then we're going to wrap up. I'll request another question. Look forward to that email.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair. Sorry about the having, but, um, I think you all for this presentation. Definitely a lot of information. Um, one of my questions, I think maybe for you, David, about, um, housing values, um, and potentially going up. I know in my district, our housing values are up. And I was just wondering if that kind of information could be broken down a bit regionally? Like the northern part of Prince George's County, mid-county and south, when it comes to like housing values?
Um, the data's only reported in Kennewa.
It's only Kennewa. So there's no way to kind of get the data for your region or your district?
Oh, I, I can contact the, the website where I find it, and, and have some things available.
Okay, that'd be awesome. And then along that, thank you. And along that, Linda, I think this question is for you. You were talking about, um, like the rollout for the senior tax credit. And that, you know, I've had people in my district, you know, right now in District 2, you can't find anything less than 500,000 a lot of the time. And so, you know, a lot of my seniors that are going to be applying for it, they may not qualify. They don't really realize that they're not going to qualify because, you know, the housing values in District 2 and our proximity D.C. are just, it, it's leaking. You know, the, the comments of, I think it's going up. I, I just can only say, my district is beyond that. Um, and so I was just wondering, um, when it comes to that, can you provide council members information to help our seniors figure out what value is going to be used for that credit? And let them have that information and that it's like very clearly advertised that your house has to be less than 500? Um, because I just think, you know, I would hate to have so many disappointed folks. Um, and I know at least my district, I know for sure they, they are going to be disappointed. It's not, they're not going to qualify.
Yeah. One thing to, to remember too, is that that amount does adjust upward by CPI. So, you know, next year it's 515, and then the after that. So I don't know if at some point it can catch up, you know, to where their value is. Because I will say assessed values don't necessarily always reflect market value here. So even though they're paid 515, their assessment might be 480, I think. So just consider that as well. And, and like I said, and it is being adjusted. We'll, we'll make sure that it's clear each year that that amount increases, that that's clear on our website and through our rap.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess we'll wrap up here. Thank you so much. That is always a great presentation, you're back, valuable information, gives us a lot to think about. Looking forward to seeing you back on the air, which is how we talk about the upcoming. Two, three minute break to switch, uh, teams. And, uh, have a great day. I'll see you. And I sent you my, uh, discussion. You say that's really cool.
Not yet.
Oh my God, you use the gavel.
I use the gavel. I don't want to do that.
Okay, don't overdo it. I got excited.
Okay, so apologies for being behind schedule. I pulled this in early and Mr. Burroughs. Mr. Burroughs scheduled GM half of January.
Yes.
You didn't have to really ask questions from the running. I'm not, yeah, just throw the ball in here and let you all grab it. But you've got Agent Rogers. Well, the topic for those in the listening audience is business development tools and assemblies. And also the presentations, it's not easy to see the presentations when people who are watching on YouTube. I believe we're putting up the powerful presentations on our Council of Retreat website. We have the county council website, Retreat. Their guests are, I think they're putting today's up shortly or hopefully. So those watching, it's a great presentation, but hard to follow. I don't have it in. So I'll turn to Agent Rogers and she can introduce everybody. And who does the background track? Ms. Rogers?
Good morning, Councilmembers. Can everyone hear you okay? All right, so I am here this morning with the portion of the economic development cluster that focuses on business development and corporate attraction in the county. And I'm going to start maybe by just giving a little bit of an intro and then pass it off to them to talk about some of the specifics. And I've asked them to maybe be a bit brief in their comments so that you guys can ask questions. So they've got a lot of information in these slides that they won't necessarily brief on here, but certainly we can get into the details as they release the questions. Is this my question for the presentation? Yes. Yes. All right, so I just wanted to give a little bit of a background on our county's economic development platform. So in June twenty twenty-one, the county executives set a new economic development platform for the county. We really wanted to set something that was more holistic and that included everything that economic development encompasses and hits on some of the key goals that we are trying to accomplish. And really giving us a platform that, you know, helps us send a signal for where our focus is going to be in this county, how to direct our tools and resources, which we'll hear about from this group this morning. And then I know in the afternoon, you'll hear from the real estate development section of the economic development cluster and how they direct their tools and resources and really how we measure progress. So, you know, we, like just in setting a vision for where we want to go with our economic development platform, really are, we're looking to set Prince George's, you know, as the place where, as the place where the region lives and works. So we've long been known as a best-known community for the D.C. metro region. I think, you know, some time ago, we determined that that was not necessarily sustainable. And particularly, and I think we talked about this a bit this morning, you know, we are sort of running the county on the backs of our residential tax base. And so needing to begin to flip that so that we're depending more on commercial tax base and also that we're bringing in jobs, we're bringing in amenities that allow people to do more than just lay their head in Prince George's County. Growing the number of people who call the county home, preserving diversity and creating access across all of our communities, really creating more places in Prince George's County that are a destination and have jobs, amenities, housing, sort of all in the same place. So just a bit about our goals, and these goals are broad goals. And there are plans that back up a lot of these goals, a lot of which have been considered and approved by this council. So, you know, we talk about our economic development strategy, which I think the council considered and approved earlier this year, which is really our business development strategy for the county. That those speak to, you know, those goals to increase our commercial tax collections by a hundred million dollars by twenty thirty, speaking to, you know, how we're going to increase the number of people who live and work in the county. We have goals as it relates to housing affordability. We have diversified the county's housing stock and our housing opportunities for all plan speaks to that. And as a result of that, we set this goal to build twenty-six thousand new units of housing in the county by twenty thirty, seventy-five percent of which will be affordable, and to have ten thousand four hundred new multifamily construction starts in the county by twenty thirty. Increasing the amount of healthy food retail square footage in what we call whole and comfortable access areas. So those are some of the areas that I think Councilmember Oriola was referring to earlier. You know, in her district, we have the Zylilla areas where we specifically want to increase fresh food retail square footage. And of course, increasing the areas in the county with identifiable character and sense of place. I, you know, say to people all the time, if I showed you a picture of, you know, neighborhood of Brownsville in Brooklyn, you probably know it was Brooklyn without me telling you it was Brooklyn. If I showed you a picture of rural houses in D.C., you probably know it was D.C. without me telling, without me telling you it was D.C. The importance of increasing these areas with identifiable character, particularly for business development and corporate attraction efforts is, you know, a broker in California or a tech broker in Israel who's looking for, you know, space in the D.C. metro area for their clients, they have no way of knowing what areas in this four hundred and ninety-eight square miles are right for the kind of business attraction we want to do unless we delineate it for them. And so we have to start to delineate these places that have identifiable character, that have a sense of place, particularly from a jobs attraction perspective, so that companies know what they're buying into. So just a little bit about how our cluster is organized. And so most of you know, I have three assistant DCAOs who focus on sort of different areas of the cluster. Focus on budget policy and strategy. It's Jose Sosa, he's sitting in the back. And he helps me with our parks, planning departments. Denise Robinson, who is in charge of real estate and oversees the ACD, Housing Authority, Revenue Authority, Redevelopment Authority, all of those agencies that touch real estate development. And you'll hear from all of those folks this afternoon. And then, of course, this morning, hearing from the agencies that touch business development and corporate attraction. And I've got Chris Don here with me who focuses on that area. And then, of course, our rest from EDC, FSC, Employee Prince George's. Who you're not hearing from, experienced Arts and Humanities Council today, but certainly they played into the business development picture for the county as well. And hopefully at some point soon into this new session, you'll be able to hear from them. So as I said, today specifically, we're going to start out with slides and remarks from David Iucci, who's president and CEO of the Economic Development Corporation. And we'll speak generally about the toolkit of incentives and tools that we use in the county, particularly to attract new jobs in the county, to help us start to make that flip so that we're depending more on the commercial tax base. You'll hear from Emily, who is the new president and CEO of the Financial Services Corporation, or FSC. Shelley Bruce Wade is in the room with us as well, who is the outgoing president and CEO. But if EDC acts as sort of the front door for businesses for us, FSC is there doing really all of the underwriting, really making sure that the businesses that receive our tools and incentives are ready to do business in Prince George's County. You'll hear from Chris Don, and he's specifically going to talk about some of the pilots and tips, which run out of my team in the county executive's office. He'll look at those. And then finally, you'll hear from Walter Simmons, our dynamic president and CEO of Employee Prince George's, which is, you know, our workforce organization. But also, I think many people don't know that Employee Prince George's also touches thousands of businesses each year in the county and providing concrete services to them. So that as David is sort of drawing, David and Don are sort of drawing them in and making sure that they can locate in the county, Walter is making sure that they have the workforce that they need to actually grab here. So with that, and then pass it over to the side of the group and they get started. David.
Good afternoon. Okay, thank you, Dr. Manchin. David Iucci, President of the Economic Development Corporation. And we'll jump into it over time. This is the outline of the recommendations of the strategic plan. The comprehensive strategic plan that the county council adopted in July. This is the result of two years of effort. Councilmember Harrison with the council representative. I'm thanking for his leadership. Also thank our planning commission, which was just instrumental in putting this together. Obviously, I'm not going to go over these eight recommendations, but my point I would make is the incentives we're about to talk about are heavily driven by the priorities in the strategic plan. For instance, if the industry sector is one of the prior types, industry sectors, is it inside developing? Is it TOD? Does it bring quality jobs that we want, good-paying jobs, good benefits and so forth? And then they set that the opportunity has strong minority business and local business concentration. These are all factors that are really, in a lot of ways, correct by the strategic plan. There are three broad categories there. Walter has the middle category, which is the workforce section. Economic development has come in the top six, which are really focused on businesses and growing businesses. And the third category, which is really the newest change in the strategic plan, is to focus on placing. That's something we did not talk about in two thousand thirteen. We did heavily talk about the strategic plan now. The, I won't be able to go over each of these. And the political ally showed me per version of the credits and tax service that we use. The elevator pitch that we have in economic development for what we're about are two things that you should remember. One, it's growing the number of jobs in Prince George's County or county residents. And two, it's growing thanks to commercial tax base. So the new county council, county executive of revenue spend on public safety and education. It's a previous group, I think Steve should explain, where there's been a three percent improvement in commercial taxes over about a ten-year period from twenty-six to twenty-nine percent. That's actually very significant. That's part of the contemplated effort to grow the commercial tax base well into the residential tax base. We have a multiple billion dollar economy, improving three percent in that very time. So if we want to do better, I love that it is a forty percent frankly over time. But it's going to take a while to get there. I'm getting some of my colleagues to talk about some of these things. So I'm just going to talk with EDI fund. The enterprise zone that Lev Al mentioned, this is a core program. What's good in addition, you should know about. While the county provides real property tax credits to businesses to locate inner enterprise zones that are by definition a disadvantaged area. The state reverses the downing of fifty percent of the property taxes. So we get a benefit on that. Some of these tax credits we have used. A high-tech tax credit on Peter Soundstoot, who proposed in the administration going to Indianapolis who changed that so that we can use it more effectively. We'd never be able to use it. The green business tax credit has not had the use that we had expected. Councilman Franklin passed a legislative, which is leadership on legislation passed last year to create new funds. It's not on this list. It should be to create funds for startup companies and so forth, which are one of the priorities of the economic development strategy. This is the list of the state incentives that are out there. And the EDC uses itself, along with FSC, our partners, to tap into as many resources as we can on the state level. And the most common ones, and they're all in economic development stimulus fund, which is used frequently to match the EDI funds. But all of these programs are, we connect with. A God-Gration tax credit is used for almost every new business that comes to the county. And these are all things that we will put in front of the business when we're talking to them. I mentioned enterprise zones. Our enterprise zone was actually recertified in two thousand twenty-one. My numbers to the last year, we had two businesses that qualified for it. They brought about fifteen million dollars in new investment in Prince George's County. in new investment in Prince George County, 24 new jobs and about 48,000 square feet. And this will be a factor of the New Orleans quarter in addition as well, because some of that is in an enterprise zone. Again, this was recently researched by, we look to push businesses in this area. If you're in your enterprise zone, you are by definition, you have higher unemployment, higher poverty rate, and lower family income. This is a map of the Greater College Park Rise Zone, which is a zone near University of Maryland. We state university is in the process of getting its own Rise Zone. These are areas that are being supported by startup businesses that come out of university technology. This is one of the opportunities for Prince George County to have these jobs, see the technology come out of our universities. The entrepreneurs with Prince George County can locate in Prince George County and grow their business. We first talked about quantum computing, which is one of the greatest opportunities Prince George County may have ever had, which turned into being a world capital for quantum computing. Now, the problem though is the statute, as it was written and drafted by the state, focused entirely on real property taxes for startup companies not using. So we will be coming to the council shortly, our employee to the county Executive's Office, who will take advantage of new state programs for Rise Zones to support rental assistance to startup companies. And again, I think this will be matched by Mr. Franklin's legislative statement as well. We've got an initiative on data centers, and data centers are great money maker, quite frankly, for Rapid County, Prince George County, without costing any services. The state made it possible for Maryland to compete with data centers about three years ago. Thanks to Council Leader Joe, and Mr. Franklin, thank you for your contribution to the area data centers. The vibrant legislation, we're now able to compete for data centers. We will be announcing the first letter of intent for the new data center in Prince George County shortly in District of Ogoes District, in an area that is always authorized by law. This is something we could not have done three years ago. Why data centers are so important is they create lots of personal property tax revenue, and they do not cost the county anything towards the services. So we think we have a new opportunity here. And this is just kind of the areas that are vibrant zone for data centers. You can see some of the top two points we use in the market in our Prince George County. I think this will be something that I'm excited to come back to the council on. We talked, Andy talked about the food deserts we have, miles and so forth. This is a map of the food deserts, that's a colloquial term, as adopted by the County Council. We will be authorized to say that the administration will be introducing legislation before we begin to expand the real inverse of property tax credit for grocery stores. It has not been effective yet, and we're trying to push it as far as we can to create greater tax benefits for grocery stores located in these food desert areas. I have some other initiatives to really go after some of these communities where we know they're struggling and don't have access to fresh food and fresh produce. So that's something we are heavily focused in Economic Development Corporation. I have two staff people that we work with almost full-time on grocery stores in these type of communities. This is a slide that so many of you might recall from previous night's council for the quote, "vulgar reality agenda." Why do we have to offer incentives in Prince George County? Why do we have to have tax credits? One of the reasons is, well, there's a myth out there that does land cheaper in Prince George County because our rents are lower, our sales prices are lower, and that's somehow an advantage. But it's not, it's disadvantage of disincentive to the developer. So this is a hypothetical problem, 200,000 square foot office building between Prince George County, Columbia, and Montgomery County. The building costs the same as built free in any other jurisdiction. You see the second line, land is cheaper in Prince George County, as we say, for $4.5 million compared to $18 million in City and $9 million in Montgomery County. The building costs is getting about $16 million over $1,300. But here's the difference, the rent that you get in Prince George County, this is about four, five years old, but it's still relative. You get lower rent in Prince George County. And the sum here was $22, compared to $59.31 this quarter. You can add $5 each of those numbers, which are per number, and the points the same. With the vacancy rate, which is unfortunately higher in Prince George County despite overall rents, that's a factor of the rental deconlection. You can see the potential rental income, how that translates over time compared to the vacancy rate. And what essentially you see at the bottom of this is you make much more money in the desert for even Montgomery County or Fairfax County. Fairfax County will be very close to Montgomery County, a little higher. So yes, we have lower rents. Yes, our sales prices are cheaper, less, our land is cheaper. But the greater returns of the developer is so much lower that the limited resources to invest might not do for Prince George County because of this overcome. That's why we have to offer incentives, that's why Chris will be talking about tuition pilots and the other programs that we have. And this is a reality that we have to understand, that what we think is an event, and it is an event for tenants, by the way, for the buyers, is a disincentive on the developers. Thank you, Don. I'll turn it over to Mr. Franklin for a presentation.
Thank you, David. I'm Don Mendel, the incoming President CEO for FSC First. And again, I wanted to thank our board of directors, Shelley Bruce Wade, her leadership and mentorship over the years, also wanting to acknowledge our award members in the room, Randy Jackson. And I'm delighted to present to the County Council this afternoon. And FSC is looking forward to getting to know the members who are new and who don't know as well, and continuing our relationship with our existing members as we provide small business services to businesses throughout the county. FSC First, also known as Prince George Financial Service Corporation, is a non-bank lender. We're risk tolerant, we're flexible, and we provide innovative and creative financing solutions as well as loan administration services, all for the benefit of small emerging businesses. We are 45 years old, and we are designated as U.S. Smart Business Administration CBC, Certified Development Company, and a CBFI, a community development financial institution as designated by the U.S. Treasury. We are designated financially also for the state of Maryland. And we have 13 diverse lending programs, with two more pending, that provide over $38 million in lending capacity. With these designations, our team of 13 staff members and three contractors were able to provide accessible pathways for small businesses to purchase real estate or to make leasehold improvements, purchase machinery, equipment, or inventory, and attain working capital. So starting with our SBA programs, which was our, the SBA 504 program is one of our main flagship programs, and we started 45 years ago. This program supports the ability for businesses to acquire and own the real estate that their business may exist in, or to stop leasing and be able to own the building, let their end or purchase a building that's available in the community. This program also provides funding for longer leasehold improvements as well. And again, machinery and equipment, and we can do loans up to $5.5 million. As a partner, has the same capabilities, but is generally for a nice, smaller loan amount, up to $250,000, but it has the same capability as the SBA 504 program. Far as our state programs go, our state programs, we administer three programs for the state of Maryland, the first being the BLT Flex Fund, BLT Skins Video Lottery Terminal. These are funds that are provided to aid fund managers throughout the state of Maryland as part of the proceeds from the casinos. And this is one of our most flexible funding programs that we have. We are intermediary for the state, it is tripled out to the State Department of Commerce. Again, this program supports working capital without requiring a government guarantee or the funding of loan loss reserves. And we can do loans, usually typically up to $250,000. We have a lot higher in special cases, and we do that on a case-by-case basis. We have two macro loan programs. One is supported by Capital One Bank, the other is supported by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. These macro loans are anywhere generally between $25,000 to $50,000. And then, a new program that's pending is the State Small Business Credit Initiative. This is a benefit that program is being delivered to the state of Maryland, whereby CBFI, as we like, FSC, will match these funds with private capital to support various small businesses and to socially and economically disadvantaged individual-led businesses or cities, or businesses, or businesses that are operating in a CBFI investment area. These loans can go up to $250,000. As I mentioned earlier, we're a lender service provider, and we provide those services for local businesses that are situated in the city of the week. We operate their revolving loan fund, as well as the Stevie Mount Premier. We operate their revolving loan fund as well. And for our sister organization, the Economic Development Corporation, we manage the Business Expansion Fund. All of these provide flexible financing, and actually, the best programs designed to be rich financing. And then we have our Green Bank programs, starting with the C-Pace Program, Commercial Property Assessment for Green Energy. This provides financing for energy efficiency, renewable energy or water conservation, upgrades to commercial buildings. And these upgrades are financed by a local Green Bank that then they cover their guest service by putting a taxonomy on the building. And they service the debt of those energy improvements through the collection of annual tax assessment. The Green Energy Loan Fund, however, is a direct loan. We can also offer loan guarantees or cover loan loss reserves to compel banks to make loans for the direct purpose of improving a commercial building such that it's more energy efficient and supporting renewable energy measures. Generally, the C-Pace Program really does not have a cap. The Green Energy Program, generally, $250,000 or can be much, much higher on a case-by-case basis. We also manage funds for corporations. For example, the Washington Gas and Light, we manage their program. We manage the Strike 35 program, providing loans for the purpose of funding developed with minority-owned, women-owned, and certain stable venture-owned businesses in several areas, and for businesses that want to serve the natural gas industry or already serving the natural gas industry. Those loans can be as high as $100,000. And a new program that we have that's sponsored by the University of Maryland Medical Systems is our Healthcare Capital Fund, providing $50,000 to support businesses in the health and wellness and medical, small business operations. And then we have a couple of grant programs. One is sponsored by the County Council for businesses who've been impacted by purple line construction and the delays surrounding that, as well as another one that's being supported by the Maryland Department of Commerce for the state effort to support those businesses in the purple line corridor, where it's experiencing issues related to prolonged construction outlets. And then we have a new program sponsored and led by Governor Franklin, the Prince George County Small Business Capital and Growth Stages coming out of CD 62. And this program establishes a non-laxing fund from which the county should provide funding for the programs authorized under this regulation. It provides direct loans, additional loans, and grants up to $250,000. This program is thanking, FSC's been tapped to help implement and establish this program and bring it to the public. And then the EDI Fund, a partnership with the Economic Development Corporation. FSC provides underwriting, servicing, and portfolio management for this fund. The fund supports operation and retention in the county's commercial tax base, provides longer repayment terms and flexible interest rates to assist in the retention, attraction, and expansion of county businesses, designed to increase economic impact of public and private investment, and provide opportunities for employee participation as well as promoting work design development and TOE areas. Loan amounts can vary. We're going to do a deeper dive on the EDI Fund in just one second. But collectively, the programs I discussed avail over $38 million in capital for small businesses. And for those two programs that I mentioned were pending come online, it'll be over $48 million available, or involved in capital for small businesses in the county throughout the state of Maryland. So now let's dive into the EDI Fund, a bit of the case study. To date, a few facts about the EDI Fund. EDI was provided to bid and certify eight projects, total of $44.6 million, which leveraged $1.3 billion in private investment and created, retained nearly 40,000 jobs. Within that program, there's an allocation, what we like to call SAIA, also sponsored by Governor Franklin, Special Assistance for Local Entrepreneurs. Within that program, 24% of those projects were, can come under that program. And this program specifies in the business, if it is owned and operated by at least 51% ownership by a county resident, and they're located in the county, the businesses, they're able to get some special handling, if you will, when it comes to accessing EDI fund dollars. That program by itself is part of the global EDI program. We've done just over $10 million in those projects eligible for sale and leverage over $38 million. Yeah, within the fund, 6% of the loans provided are conventional, that means they're payable. Yes, this means that while we have done more conditional loans than conventional, they only represent 40% of the dollars that have been funded. So in looking at this case study, this is a general project that's fairly recent. It's located in North Washington, is the redevelopment of the Livingston Square. As you might know, the giant actually was slated to close in that area. And because of this program, but for the EDI Fund, providing that capital that was needed to get the whole structure of the project completed, to fill in that gap financing, this program provided $200,000 additional loan and prevented the closing and removal of fresh food access in that community and restored the major grocery to the area. It's a beautiful store, I have not been in it yet. But it also retained 55 jobs and will create 100 more jobs by the end of 2023. This project then broadened the local economy, commercial tax base. It was also part of the sale program, because it's a local minority-owned county resident, small developer that took on this project where no one else would. And so it supported that local minority owner and incentivized another $22 million in private investment, as you can see through the chart there on the bottom, for a total project cost of $24.2 million. And lastly, we understand that many of our businesses in the county are fledgling or emerging, and FSC designed a level-up program to provide training, coaching, mentoring, and professional services to these businesses. We've engaged with our business partners, who are listed on the script, and focused, it was really gobbled up through the efforts of our local river business relief grants that came out of COVID, just the need that businesses have as if they were not prepared even to apply for grants during that period. So we saw that need and designed this program to address those issues before the event or emergencies, and make sure that they're always prepared to take advantage of the available capital as well as the available support. In summary, the funding of the seed for this program is committed through these various foundations. And again, it will also provide training, coaching, professional services, and enhancement around technology for these businesses. And with that, I will pass the political chair.
Thank you. The brief overview of tax and pilots and really our approach to how to structure these deals. One of the main things we focus on is a negotiation framework to really mitigate risk for the county in advanced levels. Typically, TIPS and pilots can be larger, more complex transactions. The risk-reward profile has been very greatly been in the counterparty. And most of the times, the product sector counterparty you're dealing with will have a team of specialists. This requires truly a higher level of service from us, to be a little bit more accommodative and add some more insights as well. That's only important just for the county, but also for the ease of doing business in the county. Because these are some of the few tools we have that actually support and attract new, larger-scale development. So it is something we're trying to do very strategically. Some of the biggest issues in any type of deal structuring that can lead to, you know, a loss of potential can be within just very danger of how they are. TIPS and pilots can go over a long period of time, sometimes decades. With that comes uncertainty and risk from time. With that comes uncertainty and risk from time. Add to that is complexity of the deal structure. Are we looking at an upfront TIF or a performance-based pilot? All of these things will lead to both sides looking to physically improve their position. That leads to a lot of deal friction. And the problem with that is many times it will get to people basically going to a binary answer, so a yes or a no, without a second thought, trying to really understand each side's points and looking to restructure a deal if you accommodate the both. So what we did was create a system of processes, basically what we call institutional platform, truly looks to accommodate these larger scale deals and ways that they could restructure their initial proposals that are more favorable to the county. Again, not only to enhance our outcomes, but ensure that there is an easy doing business. So we offer several different offerings between field advisory, underwriting. But what's most advantageous of this is there is a clear-cut process for when people engage us. This lets whether it be the representatives or even their executives know where they are and what's coming. You know, it makes it much more environmentally. One of the best things about having a full process or a framework is that allows us to uncover greater insights into the deal. What those do is allow us to reformulate how we're looking at that deal and where we can look to mitigate risk. So, you know, the strict framework really allows the deal to proceed on engineering the economic impact rather than focusing on business incentives. That's where a lot of things get lost. So everything from the first step of an RFI to multiple rounds of financial modeling scenario analysis to come up with a potentially deal restructuring to a final agreement. It's a very thorough process, but one that's normalized and that works for both. So when we look to mitigate risk, we're looking at those potential points of failure. Things are hidden in a pro forma or a final agreement. And again, purely a formalized process, we do have greater insights to see what those may be hiding. Not everything is intentional. Sometimes our counterparties are just looking to minimize their own risk. But open engagement this will allow you to actually structure the deals, again, that can work for both sides, ensuring that there's measurable performance. Performance rules are one of the big things that we institute in these. There is not going to be any type of upfront money without some type of measurable outcome that we can do all the way. So a good example of this was a recent pilot we did in Carolina. This was last summer, 2.2 million square foot proposed development through a number of phases, from 2003 to 2034. What made this interesting was when we did our first approach of really standardizing the data and what they were presenting. We wanted to see, does this really make sense? A lot of these deals are based on an incentive that takes account to an initial presentation of promise. Well, you know, there's a promise, but then there's reality. And how do we ensure that the county is still going to benefit while ensuring that the developer also has flexibility to make things happen throughout different market conditions? So when we saw that, you know, there was a limited phases, 15-year period in real estate, that moment period, we couldn't certainly tie it there. So what we focused on was a front-end agreement and back-end flexibility for this deal. So what that did was say, we will proceed with the deal, but we want an upfront immediate commitment, capital needs were seen in the development for them to proceed. What that does is you can shift the dynamics of how we feel it works in ensuring the public sector actually gives security upfront. What that did allow us to do then was offer them right back in flexibility. Why that's important is markets, conditions change. If you give these type of deals, you have to allow that type of flexibility and we back-end. That is not only a concession to a developer, but that is actually helpful to the county. It motivates action when these market conditions change to ensure a deal is not tied up. Just tell, they can actually do JV, partner, sell. You know, you want them to have that flexibility. As long as you have that upfront commitment, those are the type of things you can offer. Other protections such as those substantial deviations from the product type. Again, we're going to base an incentive value on a presentation and promise of different phases, et cetera. There needs to be protections to ensure that they actually get those. So what we then try to get to is a final optimal deal structure over phases and over time that include multiple performance rules to not only ensure the county gets impact and targeted impact of what we planned for, but also allows that back-end flexibility to ensure that there will be motivated action by any of our counterparties going forward. So if they're not coming back after years, looking to change the deal or something. And now I'll turn over to the holder.
Well, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
There you go. I still want to try. Close it out. One of the big things, of course, that we have to think about is COVID-19. We're talking about business incentives and how we have to businesses, every business needs employees. COVID-19 had a disastrous impact on all our counties. But what did that specifically mean for Prince George's? It means at one point in time, we had finally over a period of years worked to get our labor force over 500,000. When we talk about a population of close to a million, you didn't look at, well, how many, how many people in that population are working? So we had consistently worked and I'm engaged, how to develop our top pipelines to get our labor force to match the population and match the new businesses. We got it over 500,000, close to 520,000. What did COVID do? COVID decreased that number by 30,000. So when we went back to 490,000, what is the significance of that? Is our population of 2020, of our labor market, the amount of people working in our labor force today is lower than when it was a decade ago? So we lost 10 years of work in a sense of people working. So of course, what is that telling you? If you lost 30,000 people, of 30,000 workers, you lost a number of people who can work. How is that significant to our county? The number of employed people either through quarterly census of employment wages, which is a more official number, or your monthly employment number is the number of jobs. So the number of employed people isn't actually the number of jobs. The number of jobs that you hear VLS and the United States Department of Labor that they're saying and present is not the number of available jobs in America. It's the number of employed people. It's going to be hard to keep your number of jobs up if you don't have the number of workers. So the first slide is our workforce system. We operate Prince George's operational workforce system, which we have modeled and branded as America's first mission network operating as a workforce system in the country, which today makes us the largest workforce system by partners in America at 135 MOU signed partners. We break it out by tiers. This allows us, where we worked from six years ago, to engage our faith-based community, to engage our municipal authorities, to engage our nonprofits, our CBOs, our grassroots, our advocacy organizations, to promote the services and supports that we have so that we can bring that labor force back to where it was in 2020, in January of 2020, so that we can have the labor force to actually staff our businesses. So we created an option where we got three sets of members. Eligible officials can be members. It's how you can ensure that your constitutional services, your chief of staff knows what's happening. For those that have been around, our outreach team attends about 400 events per year, so literally one per day throughout the year. This is how you know what's happening in your districts, in your area. And it includes CBOs, educational institutions, nonprofits, businesses, government agencies. And that's what makes up that 135. The structure on the right, so you see where the services already happens, are American Job Centers. We opened the American Job Center in National Harbor, which just celebrated a year. And Council of Boroughs District, which we are growing and leveling. We have our first youth career center that's in Saultland, which is the first youth-focused, as you talk about crime and as you can talk about talent pipeline development. We have the only youth-focused career center in the region. And all of this represents our network. And then we're now working in our tier two with access points to utilize nonprofits, libraries and other municipalities to have their own access points. That's how we get back to where we were in 2020 of having a labor market of a labor force over 500,000. When we engage the businesses DCL Rogers represented, we engage businesses. I'm happy to say that when we first started around probably six years ago, we were serving about 600 businesses per year on average. Now our average is 1,700 businesses per year. We hope to grow that to 4,000 businesses per year. We offer a number of different services related to recruitment, customized recruitment, hiring, the job fairs like we have today. We have a job fair currently happening at Prince George's Community College. What is the significance of bringing your community together with your businesses? You hear across the news, we can't find workers. We can't find people don't show up at job fairs, only 30 people. As of yesterday, we have 534 workers registered for the job fair today. We are averaging 200 to 300 quarterly. So because we can utilize a community influential workforce in that way, we don't see job fairs where we have 20 people show up, 30 people show up. Our biggest are quarterly and sometimes you have two or three job fairs in a week that are averaging like the smaller, which we call hiring, is 40 to 100. That's allowing us to provide thousands of services to businesses. The biggest piece on top of just providing those free services, which are posting the jobs, marketing, recruitment, is the incentives on top of that. We want, we know that 30% of our workers go right across that border and work in DC. That means when they get off work and they want to go buy a grocery store, what grocery store they probably go to? The grocery store that's on their way home in DC. What store they want to go buy Christmas gifts for their kids? The store that's on their way home in DC. They also know, we also know they work in Amara, Amara. So how do we incentivize our businesses and other businesses and hire Prince George's County residents? It's for our Rapid Reemployment Grant. This is what you see listed here, where we can give up to $15,000 per business for hiring unemployed Prince George's County residents. As of January 1st, we expanded that into underemployed residents as well. What that started in FY1 was 548,000 to 30 businesses, which is a 1-1, direct correlation of 79,000. We grew that through your support, which we appreciate, to 4.5 million. And FY22, which would be, went from 30 businesses receiving grants to 187 businesses receiving grants, from receiving 548,000 to actually receiving 4.5 million, which means we added 576 in meaningful jobs through this one initiative. And this year, we have 4 million additionally allocated. We're actually ahead of our, our spending, as Councilman Ivey mentioned and asked earlier. So we're actually one of the groups that is ahead of spending in which we are talking, we say around us about letting them know repeatedly that we're ahead of our spending. We also have apprenticeships to keep, especially because we are, Prince George's County is the building trades labor organization capital in the DMV. We have the largest amount of building trade unions located right in that. Issue that we saw a couple of years ago is they were 92% white male. So they were not representative of the county that they were located. So what did we do? Now we're working with the Panthers Union and the Regional Training Center to put a Employed Prince George's office inside of the labor organization. They said, well, your people can't pass their tests and exams. So inside that, we're going to provide support to help them get into all of the building trade unions. Now we've also, because their primary team is apprenticeship. We also created a Prince George's County Apprenticeship Expansion Fund, where we're going to incentivize the labor organizations and their businesses to hire Prince George's County residents through apprenticeship and they get an additional incentive. We hope to have eventually grow that to several million dollars. And then actually with returning citizens, as many know, we rate number two and the number of returning citizens in Maryland. So through your legislation, Councilman Franklin, the other county members that support us unanimously approved to provide a returning citizen employment incentive so that businesses that hire returning citizens can also get an incentive as well. So you have the Rapid Reemployment Grants. You have the Prince George's County Apprenticeship Expansion Fund and your returning citizen employment incentive. So not only are we bringing them to the community, are increasing the number of businesses we serve, we're also giving them incentives for hiring our residents. Lastly, how we do this, we have 14 operating programs that operate throughout the county. We have industry-specific programs that are focused on sectors, that focus on transportation, hospitality, professional services, healthcare, construction and IT. We also have the first apprenticeship intermediate program operated by the Workforce Board in Maryland. Then we have a youth demographic specific programs, out-of-school youth, 18 and 24 with knowledge which is assessed, along with youth career connections, which focuses on in-school youth, high school juniors and seniors who are not on track or college in the military, make sure when they walk across that stage or 30 to 90 days they are on a plan. After 90 days of graduation without a plan, every single week moving forward, they grow closer to being a statistician. This is why we want to make sure when they walk across the stage, they can have it, they can have that opportunity. That's what you started seeing several years ago, having the apprenticeship and workforce day. So they get their own apprenticeship sash that goes across that says when they walk across the stage, they might not be going to this college, but I am going into apprenticeship. Lastly, our adult demographic specific programs. On-COVID for workers that are 50-plus, great batteries for all, for immigrants, refugees, Saudis and English language learners. We want to be an inclusive county to make sure that every Prince George's County resident has an opportunity for a livable wage job. Veterans Career Connection, we're number one in Maryland for veterans, for veterans and Hispanics, population successful returning citizens. And our COVID-19 workforce development recovery program, as we talk about how we lost 30,000 workers. And those are our adult demographic specific programs. I'm happy to say that we are, you know, before the pandemic, we were serving 26,000, which was up from 13,000. So in the midst of us decreasing our unemployment rate by two percentage points, we increased the amount of people we were serving. And that's why we worked in our community. But this is the culmination of how we not only develop our labor market, our labor force for our businesses, how we increase services to businesses, how we incentivize businesses, and then how we walk our people through it. And last, as we get to how we create, how do you go from job seekers or employees to employers? Happy to announce that our Veterans Career Connection has an entrepreneurship component project opportunity that services better entrepreneurs. We hope to grow that they can eventually go to EDC and FSC, develop their business plans and get loans, get real estate, commercial real estate in the county, population success, which is to help. The number one employment for returning citizens is actually entrepreneurship. So we're helping them to create businesses. And then our Great Batteries Hall, we have started our first Hispanic entrepreneurship program. I'm happy to say that Employed Prince George's is our holiday celebration today and as a point out to the staff, all of the vendors that we used yesterday were participants from our programs. From the people who decorated the room, from the company that did the desserts, from the company that did catering, they represented apprentices. They represented our Latina entrepreneurship. So even as we utilized that, from six months ago, these were participants, to six months later, they were now vendors, receiving money where they had their business plan. They started a business and they're now generating revenue. And they actually had about five employees who we created jobs. So we even go into the entrepreneurship route and we eventually go to grow them where they can get a loan from FSC and then go on to larger areas. So that's how Employed Prince George's does O U. So I'll give it back, I guess, to the speaker, Mr. Franklin.
That is the end of the presentation. I know that was a lot of information, but I know this is also the beginning of a conversation, not the end of it. Let me just say, at least once a week, I ask Walter Sennott, which is ready to take my job. But and hopefully that was a good wrap to get a sense of how all of these different pieces work together. Because the work specifically that Employed Prince George's does is sort of ground zero, right? It's the work that we are doing to lift residents up and make sure that they are ready for all of the businesses and all of the jobs that are coming and that are actually participating, you know, in that wealth building that happens in our business development sector. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to the chair, I believe, and we'll see if you want to take kind of your questions.
I believe with the county executives, we've been through some of these stories. We're going to take a few questions about the activity. And it's gotten into conservative, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Ray.
Wonderful presentation from all of you. I've learned a lot and thank you so much. I do have a couple of questions for, and I'm not biased, because he was my favorite people, Walter. Walter, just want to ask, you know, I know all of you touched on the importance of worker force and job. And I want to find out specifically how you're addressing the issue that you're struggling to find workers. What's the quarter to five?
Yeah, so that's the, and that's what you see as we look at. So one of the biggest things is we look at posting rate. Where are you posting your jobs? Are people able to see it? So we try to make sure that we post across multiple platforms. So that's the one is how we post. We then actually work on marketing and promotion. While they're good at marketing. While they're good at marketing to their customers, pretty terrible at marketing to, uh, employees. So we've been talking about website, uh, flyers, we've been offering videography services. Uh, let's fly a drone through your building to show people a day in the life. This is very key because, you know, it's like I told you, it's like online dating. You might put it out there, but both people have to swipe in the same direction to make a point. A lot of times, what we see, I, I was talking with two of my other institutions recently, are larger ones. We had a graduating class from Prince George's Community College of thirteen healthcare technicians, um, that are really going to help front the frontline of COVID. We had two large institutions, I'm not going to say their names. All thirteen graduates chose one employee. So the other employee was sitting there and I said, so now we go into, why aren't you marketing the world? You extended thirteen offers, you got zero people who selected you. All thirteen went to that table across from you. What does that look like? Uh, so not only are we marketing and helping them on job posting, we're also figuring out like, why are employees not connecting with you? And then we do labor market information. As you all know, we can offer you a number of different labor market information tools, even specific, drill that out specific to certain areas as, as we can through zip code, uh, to look at compensation salary, things of that sort. To see are they competitive, how competitive are you within a five mile radius of other businesses like you? So what is your salary and benefit from analytics? Uh, and then lastly, we also work on career pathways. Uh, if, if people can't see a future with your business, why do they want a worker? So we, we teach them how to show people the career pathways in their business. Uh, we just do this every two to four years. We're actually helping build out their classifications, make sure they're status competitiveness, so they can show people that. Lastly, we start from internal. You can't find businesses, do you have lower skill Prince George's County residents that are showing up to work every day in low wage jobs? That even though they don't have the skill sets, we do something called incumbent worker training. So we will take those low wage workers that show up every day and pay to train them to take those higher level jobs and then work to backfill the lower wage jobs that are certainly easier to fill and help fill vacancies that one. So we use a customized approach with a business consultant side to each independent industry and create those customized solutions, uh, that we do outside of the large job fairs. So today at Prince George's Community College, we have about sixty different employers who are on site today, uh, doing interviews, offering conditional offers for hiring people on site.
And I know other people have questions, just one more question really quickly regarding employers in the region. You know, how are we aligning our efforts with Amazon's growth in the region?
So that's why we started the Transportation Logistics Consortium. We are actually aligning that with also decreasing crime in the region. Uh, so we, as you see the long mile centers that have been popping up. So we started partnering through the Supporting Council last year, uh, the county stand-up and deliver. So some of the people that are actually delivering and packaging the food from food banks and food factories to actually put them in the cars are the county's returning citizens and disconnected youth. Uh, so we're preparing it for logistics, we're training them in warehousing, logistics, also in CBL, which can help us with our bus driver shortage, transportation shortage. And then after they get done with stamping delivery, so we pay them for forty hours worth a week of classroom instruction and actual time that they're working at the food factories and working in the warehouses, so that they can initially fill that, uh, fill those jobs. Now, on the administrative side, because we also need to focus on the higher wage Amazon positions. So we're also working on professional services, IT and cloud, so that we can focus on the security cloud that's going to be used in our region, professional services jobs as well, that we're doing various occupational skills training online. Uh, we have partnered with Osara, which is the largest training, and that's something that county didn't realize. We have five thousand free virtual courses. We made the fee upfront, so every Prince George's County resident can participate in those courses. So not only focus on the frontline jobs, we need to make, and that's what they were talking about before this. Don't just give Prince George's County those twenties, fifteen, seventeen, twenty dollar jobs. We want eighty-five thousand dollar a year jobs too. How can we get that going? So we're doing, um, on both of those. There's more to that, but that's the hiring.
I appreciate that, and that helps me see who is doing that, so I certainly encourage those. Thank you very much.
Every municipality in your district, we're working with Bowie, we're working with District Heights, we're working with, uh, North Brentwood. Uh, but as you look at, as you look at the municipalities in your districts and counties, we will do have a partnership opportunity in our tier two to work directly with them to even put job centers, resource centers in kiosks in their centers along with your churches that have the capacity to put resource and job centers inside of the churches.
My question's for, uh, Ms. Don. Uh, you mentioned, uh, the EBI fund, and you also mentioned the newly created county council fund. You said CB sixty-two is pending, is that right?
That's right.
And then why is that pending?
Well, it's pending to EDC. I understand that it's come out of committee already, but, um, we're waiting for the green light to stay in the fund and for the fund to be funded before we can start marketing it and accepting application for it.
And is there anything in CB sixty-two that tracks whether or not, uh, businesses receive this money, actually hire Prince George's County residents? Is there any tracking, uh, component that requires them to provide exactly who they're hiring?
Right, so for all the, the business programs, embassy offerings, we're tracking that for every program. We're tracking all demographics, we're tracking location, um, we're tracking, um, the use of the funds, even down to the penny. Uh, we can control disbursement so that we can account for and report on conscious jobs. Uh, but and then we have to report on an annual basis as well. So we can track the growth of those jobs and then also know that when there's any kind of job loss as well. Um, so we can, you know, put our arms around that, see if it's going on with the business. We also track the financial health of the business.
So for each of the businesses who were within the award EBI plus in the past, I can go and look up how many of those individuals are responsible for this account, racial makeup, and things of that nature?
We actually provide a quarterly report, specifically for the county council, with fifteen pages of more data of that sort.
So, so I could do that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm very interested in seeing it, I've not seen that report, uh, but if you could send that to me, I would appreciate it.
And to date, uh, say forty-nine percent of the jobs created and retained in the conventional area of the EBI loan were for Prince George's County residents and twenty-four percent on the conditional program. And seventeen, uh, thirty percent of those were directly one percent minority owned and six to seven percent were very small businesses. So you have these stats, many, many more can get the share of the workforce.
So you said, uh, forty-nine percent of the businesses, forty-nine percent of the workers, the businesses who have awarded this money were for Prince George's County.
Right, for conventional loans and then another twenty-four percent for conditional loans. So there's a difference between the conventional loans that are repaid, those jobs that are created, and how many of those are counting residents. And then another stat for the loans that are conditional, uh, with return of investment criteria of the county, and then those jobs are created.
Do we also have information for each business? What benefits like healthcare, retirement, do we have that information as well?
Every EBI business has to provide, uh, tell us the way each can benefit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next sentence on Congressman Franklin.
Thank you, and I want to thank, um, the team for the presentation and for the partnership over the, the definitely my twelve years without, certainly, uh, leaving the last, I guess, economic crisis, which was the housing crisis, making it through that and now making it through the COVID nineteen. And so I want to congratulate you all for the great team. I remember when, uh, there wasn't yet an economic development cluster and then this whole concept came into being. It's, it's just been, um, um, you know, improved every year, just the whole, the whole strategy. Because there was a time when it was a lot of different silos, uh, around economic development. And of course, the last administration, that changed, uh, and it's been improved even more so during this administration. So I want to congratulate you all for, for your efforts. Uh, I remember David, when we, you know, that we led the state in job creation five years in a row. Uh, and six, six years in a row. Uh, and, and you know, and I think it's important that we continue to tell the story. Uh, because, you know, people have a short attention spans, it's often easy to think and to forget the progress that was made. And we in the last, particularly the last twelve years that I've been, been on this council, we've seen the county transform in terms of economic development. Uh, we, we know we still have, have work to do and bring more and more amenities that our residents want to see, but, uh, you know, there used to not be a Tangerine, it used to not be an MGM National Hall. Uh, 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 One More Town Center was nothing like it is today. Um, uh, there, there was no development at Camp Springs, there was no Town Square, there was no, you know, regional development center. There was no grid development around New Carrollton. Group one was, you know, it's transformed over that time. And we go on and on and on, Town Square, Laurel and all the things that have happened in Heightsville and the like. Um, but what I do want to emphasize is the slide that you put up there, David, when you were comparing jurisdictions and the, um, I think that's the most important thing when it comes to economic development. Uh, and when, uh, my colleagues and the public have questions about why are we not attracting this? And why are we attracting that? It really boils down to the issue of return on investment. And, and it boils down to that question. If you can make return on investment pencil out and make sense for the kind of development you want to see, it will come to the county. If you can't, it's not going to come. And, um, you're going to attract different development where the ROI does pencil out and does, it does make sense. And it, but it may not be the development you want. So, um, if you're looking to incentivize and attract the kind of development that we want to see, uh, we have to be mindful of return on investment and how we're as policymakers affecting that either positively or negatively. And if we affect it negatively, but, you know, whether it's by, uh, making projects not profitable or by creating uncertainty, um, you then will see negative consequences in terms of what you attract and in terms of where, where we grow. Um, you know, transit oriented development is what we all want to see happen. Is some of the most expensive and complicated kinds of development to, to attract and to, and to develop in the county? And, and so, uh, creating certainty, creating opportunities towards that return on investment to make sense is how you attract more of it. Um, create uncertainty and, and, um, creating additional costs on those projects is how you discourage. Um, and, and then, so then you have, um, from the private sector, more of an interest in investing in sure things. Things that we might consider to be sprawl, things that we might consider to be, uh, uh, the kind of development that we don't want to see as much of. But the ROI pencils out for those projects and they feel like those projects are more sure things. So if you want to change that, you can change those market forces. You have to factors that, that ultimately result in return on investment. And if, and if there's one thing we should keep in mind is that right now, return on investment is far, far better in the District of Columbia more than anybody, but Northern Virginia as well than the county. And until we can impact that number, we're going to continue to be behind the curve. And so that's what I would encourage my colleagues and general public. We should be laser focused around, uh, improving, um, our economic situation around. I don't know if you will have a comment on that.
So I can, uh, just sort of comment, um, and, uh, encourage everyone to really dig into the economic development goals that you've set, all of the strategies that, that, sorry, economic development strategy for housing opportunities fund, all of the workforce, uh, development strategy. Because all of us need into those goals and if you want to know where we're going and how we are making decisions on a daily basis about where to put our capacities, um, then those goals tell me that. And everything that we have pretty much is focused on, uh, trying to get the jobs, amenities and housing that we want to see in the county inside the Beltway and near transit. And it is because it is hard to do it, great, and, and, and so you need those incentives in order to promote those things. Um, in an environment where the market doesn't yet, you know, cause it to happen on its own. Um, so we are focused on that. Um, it's our best chance we can to get the kinds of amenities that particularly, uh, uh, county residents want to see. So our best chance to get grosser, other types of retail, sit-down restaurants, everything that we hear from folks every day that they want to see. And then we set those goals so that I don't have to be on these guys every minute to say, hey, you're making a decision that they're that long or this word or that phrase. Everybody knows where to push the capacity. It is also, you know, uh, just, it's our opportunity to get the kinds of retail that we want to get. It's our opportunity to place, make and attract the kinds of jobs, attract corporations that we want to, because we can develop identities around those places more than we can sort of the expense of, uh, everything else that we have. And it's also more environmentally sustainable for us to concentrate and not have to depend on this sprawl to get the things that we want to get for county residents. So there's a lot of intention around why we, um, focus inside the Beltway around transit, why we focus on TOB and why we also accordingly then focus all of our capacities and capacities.
If I could add just briefly, I, I am always, I, I discern myself with a few cheerleaders, which is down here since I was a child. And my, uh, I'm developing marketing, this is a new part that we're promoting. I was so excited on Monday night, uh, when we were opening and Mr. Olson was there. Uh, wonderful partner, driving the pupils in eating the region, while you're not being gaster with our first pair of hips. That took over seven years to accomplish. Uh, and, and the message I tried to tell them was how hard it was to succeed if you only die three times. Not a whole, not for thinking about it, it was dead. I think it was not for opportunities on the funds and investment by Prince George's County in the form of a pile of EBI fund. We wouldn't have had it. So we have to be realistic and that was the purpose of that one slide, how difficult some of these challenges are. Another message I would use, please understand, we are part of a regional economy. We are not an island. We're a regional, Washington DC, we did, you all know better than I do that some of our neighbors are some of the wealthiest jurisdictions in the United States. The irony is we're the top four percent of the wealthiest jurisdictions in the United States, I've heard some counties, we're the top four percent. But we have neighbors who are the top one percent, and that is one of the challenges that we face. Sixty percent of our residents, the last time I saw, have to leave the county every day for their employment. They are actually our best educated, best paid employees, or our citizens. We want to turn that number to kind of a regional average of a fifty-fifty. I think that would be a goal that we would all attain. I think that's consistent with some of the things that, that these riders have talked about. Uh, and we've made progress, we did leave the state of Maryland and John Road for six years. I love being a Frenchman, I mean, then COVID hit, we launched over fifty thousand jobs. We, well, when I use slightly different scales, we launched over fifty thousand jobs in COVID. Uh, and, and that was in four months. We gained twenty-six thousand in six years, lost fifty thousand in four months. But the really good news was the chart that I think of Luke, Madeline and Steve put up there earlier, which is in the rate of recovery, we were in the middle of Maryland's worst days. Ten years ago, we were at the bottom of the recovery. So we, we are doing better, we have a way to go with police and we are part of a regional economy. And I'm getting a businessman and businesswoman who make hard business decisions. They love all that return on investment and we're not an island.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, next speech from, um, Crystal, Crystal, just worry out.
Thank you, Chair. Um, one, thank you for the presentation, a lot of information. Um, you know, I represent District Seven, um, mostly inside the Beltway. And, you know, we talked a lot about, uh, inside the Beltway, um, and talked about, you know, looking for more transit oriented development and focusing on that. But the reality is, you know, my district hasn't felt the trickle down of this investment, right? I haven't felt the, you know, ribbon cutting growing that some other districts have really felt. Um, even with, you know, the newest project, which is the statewide thing for our district in Sutcliffe, there's some issues there. Um, and we haven't seen the commercial part and a lot of residents are happy to have attended community meetings for that project. So I just want to name that, I hear it, but I, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say that my residents don't feel like there is a true investment inside the Beltway. You know, not the doors that I've knocked on, it's a common thread. And so I think, I hope that we get to a place where we're not continuously saying it, but we actually, the residents that live there feel it. Because if that doesn't happen, it doesn't matter what any of us, me included, say, right, in the days. So I have also some just questions based on the presentation. One, I'm just curious, when you talked a lot about the data that you could pull and kind of understand like who's employed and hired. Do you also track like data around the industry, like who we're investing in? Is it targeted in any way? Like are we prioritizing certain industries or is it just across the board and how are we looking at that?
The newly adopted strategic plan, I put that one slide up there, has actually identified six industry sectors that have the greatest potential of bias paying jobs instead of paying jobs. And so we are heavily focused on those sectors. It is, it's a tech, there's a technology sector, there's a health sector, there's a federal government. I believe we've made some progress. And we have, we're just, we haven't come out yet to make it that age. So, but obviously one of the biggest areas that we're, we made progress on. And, and so those, so we concentrate on the warehouse, the second tier and then destination retail as well. So those, those big priorities, I think Dawn, who we thought, we administered the econ, we called incentive fund. If you are in one of those sectors, you are prioritized. Now, we look at jobs in dental, we're not going to prioritize on good jobs that might not be one of the sectors, we'll make a case by case analysis. But we're driven by priorities in this strategic plan for these three sectors that have the greatest potential.
And are you also mapping like where those investments are, like what districts, regionally? Those businesses?
We're aware where they go and we are, we're well aware of that again.
Mr., like I guess to that point, is there prioritization, like you talk about inside the Beltway, so you're also focusing on those partyers and also incentives? Or how are you working to prioritize those businesses inside of like the Beltway?
In the evaluation of an opportunity, it's inside the Beltway versus outside the Beltway, it is heavily prioritized. TOD is prioritized, it's a minority business owner, it's a priority. It's a private, it's an industry sector, these are all factors that makes the project, would you say, might be less attractive financially, more attractive for a deal we do because of these, those criteria that were set.
Also, I, I know you're looking at.
No, I just, to the first comment you made about just the development pipeline, I know that we are looking forward to particularly with the district council members sort of getting together so that we can review what the development pipeline looks like in some of your districts. There is a lot going on in your district and I think some of it might be in phases that the public can't really see. Yeah, and I know our communications team has been sort of working on like how do we sort of bring people along more so that they can see it at these stages where it's not necessarily public, but there's a lot going on in Sutland and our Montcoreder project. So there are lots of things active in the development pipeline in your district.
And from a general perspective, we can pull that from a workforce perspective, we can give you industry insight, of course, by specific industry, that's what's grouped here. We also, one thing for you all to look at as well is we utilize a number of different data tools to look at the mentality of the businesses in your districts. So even we look at using their financial status. Hooper's uses a ranking of those who are most close to close A, those who are most prosperous. And that's how we coordinate our outreach and engage the strategy of those businesses. And our organizations meet routinely to coordinate across workforce off-living, across development, to do that as well. So that's something that we, we look at overall is even identifying minority women and even, these businesses are ranking in red. Who's going to touch base with them, figure out what's going on? Because a lot of things you look at, other businesses are looking at how their counterparts are doing in our county as well. If their counterparts aren't doing well, it's a red alarm for them as well. So that's about our strategy and any industry insights from a workforce standpoint, if you want to know why or look at that. Because that, that impacts their recruitment strategy and what they call location quotient. And if their location quotient is bad, they don't want to locate in that area. And that's something we have to figure out how to improve that location quotient. This was big with our two U, when two U first started, some one time, when they started staying looking at awful, looking at bad. And the money that they were spending to recruit talent was larger than the money that they were getting from the incentives that we were getting there. Yes, they had, but the cost of recruit talent to the region was costing more than incentive. And so we had to start working on strategy to decrease that recruitment cost.
Yeah. With a question here.
Um. Is there?
I'm getting busy.
Um, you got a couple of those that you could maybe go off on. That works. What we have is, is Fisher.
How's in my B and email? I want to know what you want to do.
Is Fisher the one that?
Yeah, mine's not like a long question. When you were talking about the numbers of the, the jobs of the commuting out for, out of the county for jobs. Is it possible to get them to vote into what's federal and what's private, right? I think there's like a lot of the federal employment that we're never going to be the federal government. And I just see that difference in that.
We hope to get some more of those federal jobs, okay, exactly.
We have also too, right? But I think it's, it would be cool, I think, for us to see like what is a federal commute job to DC and what is a private sector commute job? I would, I would love that out.
My last question was Lurial, a short answer.
Yeah, it comes from the notion, but we can try to get that to be, Councilman Fisher, it's not, they tend to do it not by the sector, they do it by zip code. But we can try to see what we can do. And if we make it for second, we can at least tell you where it comes from specifically by zip.
Okay.
We know, we know where to go and where to find from in large maps or numbers, but I don't think we have.
It's hard to tell you where it actually.
I don't think we have a broken number by five percent.
You also know that what those private sector jobs are paying other places in the region versus what they're paying.
And overall, we do, when we do our ranking of state workforce order, we are, I think us and only one of the five out of eight regions have a negative commuting rate. So that, that is something that we're trying, that's just a little tricky.
That's what we're doing.
Um, yes, and if you have to give me this information online, that's fine, but I would also be interested on these plans and strategies we have around working on vacant spaces. For example, I know the National Harbor, they have a program where they work to fill their spaces and at this kind of rate for local small businesses. There's a lot of vacant property in my district. I'm just wondering if the E C or exemplized program, do they work with those companies for any kind of discounted rental rate? Just to fill those spaces just to let it help the state of vacant?
That's another area where we would prioritize, who vacant states, the existing vacant states would prioritize. But the State Department of Housing and Community Development just announced, I think it was today or yesterday, about a hundred and twenty-five grand statewide. I think thirty-some were in the county. They had a specific program even filling vacant states. And so we, we have received the list from the state of those businesses, not only, but it was well over thirty. We're interested in that system to reach a convenient state rate. It's all private or store.
Can you give us the list, can you give that?
Certainly, please, it's all private or store.
And these reporters, thank you for your team, very comprehensive as always, not good questions. And with additional questions, I know that the panel was voted on, we talked to you, and they responded. We're ready for lunch. We're only a half hour behind schedule, so. The real estate discussion may get a little compressed here. But I'm sure, I'm sure we have the information we need. Okay, so we're on break.
Mrs. Chair. Yeah, the number is, how many of us in the council members, if you could move quickly to come to us and this will be everybody on schedule. We'd like to have someone who's called up for a moment and we'll call you as much as we can. Thank you.